Opposed? It is seven zero. So, thank you all for your patience. I'm sorry you had to wait. Before we move on to our regular agenda, though, the planning board has some sad news to share about the departure of Josh Morris, who's been with us for six years. I was gonna say five, but time flies. He's been a valued member of our team. He is going to be sorely missed, but he is moving on to a better opportunity for himself. And while we're sorry to see him go, we wish him the very best. And we got a little gift for Josh.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're gonna miss you a lot, Josh.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for all that you've done.
Thank you.
We appreciate your work.
I just wanted to thank the planning board for the wonderful opportunity I have had here. It was great getting to know all of you and great working with you. I very much enjoyed my time here. It's a great community with wonderful people. And I think that we've, you know, done some great things together over the years. And I have nothing but very fond memories and everything. It's just a great experience overall, so thank you very much for everything.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Josh. And we hope you enjoy having your Thursday nights back.
Yep.
Okay, announcements. Announcements, so. Josh, would you like to do an announcement?
Sure. It'd be fun. So, there will be a zoning bylaw review committee meeting on, wait, I'm sorry. My fault. So, the plastic bag begins on September 10th, or did, yeah, a couple of weeks, next week. So, the plastic bag begins. The zoning bylaw review committee will have a meeting also on that same day, September 10th, at 6:30. The Sculpture Park Subcommittee will have a meeting on Tuesday, September 17th, Bright and Early, at 7:30 a.m. in the Burlington High School Principals Conference Room. Didn't know that that room existed, so learned something new every day. The Hazardous Waste Day is September 21st, Saturday from 8:30 to 12 at Francis Wyman. And Town Meeting is coming up on September 23rd at 7:30 p.m. at the high school. So, those are some upcoming events for the community.
Yes, the Burlington High School Principals Conference Room. I went to my very first meeting there not long ago. And I was happy to report that despite having gone there for four years in high school, that was the first time I was in his office.
Could you tell me where that is? Because usually when I go over there, it's at the school committee room.
It's not, it's, if you walk in the main entrance and you go up to the, you have to get buzzed in and you go up to the reception desk, they'll show you in. It's behind the reception area.
Okay, thank you.
That's where I spent all my time when I was there.
I'm sure you did.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can I just, one other announcement? It was brought to my attention recently that BCAT now has a daily news report, the three most popular important stories. And you can get it delivered directly to your email inbox.
Oh, cool.
And BCAT is a local organization. And they usually get it right. So, I've been subscribing to it for a little while now, and it's been helpful.
Can you subscribe right on the BCAT site?
Right, you can go right on the BCAT site under, I think it's BCAT News.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'll make sure that they have something there that really draws your attention.
Okay, sounds good, thank you, Ernie.
Can I make one more announcement?
Of course.
In the paper, Daily Times, yesterday or today's paper, there was a story that the planning board is sure to vote on the 61 centership proposal on the September 19th meeting. Just wanna let everyone know in the viewing audience and you guys that it is not on your agenda until the first meeting of October. So, hopefully, we can get somewhere with that. But the announcement was, "Planning Board Will Vote on the 19th." And I just wanna let everyone know.
That wasn't on BCAT, though, was it?
It was not on BCAT. So, just letting you know that it's not on the agenda, even though it was front page news today.
Well, I have one more announcement there for everyone to watch out for the mosquitoes. They just announced tonight Burlington's got triple E. And they found a mosquito with triple E in Burlington.
In Burlington?
In Burlington, yeah.
Yeah.
Wow.
Thank you.
Josh is getting out just in time, I guess.
All right, we do not have any legal notices or nonapprovals, so we're gonna move on to matters of appointment.
Madam Chair, take, make a motion to take Item 7A, 7B, 7C, and 7D together for discussion purposes?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, seven zero. Item 7A is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 6.1.1.1, alteration of a nonconforming use of the zoning bylaws. One and three Great Meadows Road, the town of Burlington is the applicant. Item 7B is a public hearing, application for approval of a site plan. One and three Great Meadow Road, town of Burlington is the applicant. Item C is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 6.1.1.2, expansion of a nonconforming use of the zoning bylaws. 10 Great Meadow Road, town of Burlington is the applicant. And Item 7D is a public hearing, application for approval of a site plan. 10 Great Meadow Road, town of Burlington is the applicant. So, welcome. And although we know who you are, please state your name for the record.
Yes, John Sanchez, Poliworks Director of Keating Burlington.
And Jeff Alberti from Weston and Sampson.
So, tonight, we only brought a couple of plans, which I think that some of them were distributed to you as well, but showing some of the landscaping that we talked about. And the plans were modified to reflect the comments that we received. And that's pretty much all we're bringing tonight. Anything new, as it was requested.
Do you wanna talk us through a little bit of what the landscape plan entails?
Sure.
Thank you.
This should be easy. I know that you saw the more detailed one at the last meeting. And there was a request to increase some of the landscape plantings along the roadway. So, you can see outlined with the clouded area, some increased landscaping here, which includes common juniper, as well as on the other side of the roadway. We also understand from staff comments that there was a desire to try to vary the height of the plantings along the material storage bins to help break up that amassing and hide that material storage bin. So, that's something that we're gonna incorporate as well.
And specifically, we wanted some things that would have greater height.
Yes, we'll look at different plantings so that we can vary that height and make some adjustments in the final plans for that.
Okay. Staff?
Sure. We had a pretty robust conversation in the last two meetings. But as mentioned, just some of the vegetation, there was a lot of kind of just low to medium height. We just wanted to vary it, especially along the bins. They are putting a decorative block, not just a cement block, but a block that looks similar to behind Burlington Heights, that kind of that large, or actually, the new block that, the Building 19 project, that kind of block face. But to add some landscaping along that face to break it up a little bit at different heights. Also, the, as we mentioned at the last meeting, they are redo it, rebuilding or creating, is there a sidewalk all the way across now?
There is an access sidewalk, so we're constructing that.
Okay, it's in pretty rough shape, though. But rebuilding with vertical granite curbing along the entire bend from the entrance to the retail plaza where Wendy's is there, all the way to the culvert heading up Great Meadow Road. So, with, we feel like that's a tremendous improvement along the roadway there. And also, along that brick, the wall face of where the bins are, there's a fence that's super close that really makes it uncomfortable to be on that sidewalk edge, but they're pulling that out. And that'll be grassed up until the vegetation before the wall. So, that'll be a much nicer experience through there. CONCOM has provided more recent comments, and I know we'll go through the comments, but they, they've commented that they have, they've concluded discussion. They haven't officially voted yet, but they feel that this, the proposal, they've worked with the, with these guys. And they've met everything that they were looking for. They were looking for some, a little bit of, to include some riverwalk or an outlook to the wetland. And I know, I just spoke with John Sanchez earlier, that they're committed to continuing that discussion as looking on to the well field from the other parking lot, but not part of this application, but continuing to try to figure out how that can be accommodated. So, other than that, we're, we're very comfortable with moving forward. We have site plan decisions in front of you and special permits in front of you. As you know, both of these sites are nonconforming to their, to the Aquifer District, as well as some of these is nonconforming to the IG District. They have demonstrated continuous use at both of these properties of those nonconformities. So, we feel comfortable with the administration of meeting zoning criteria. And we feel that, of course, that the buildings themselves are gonna be tremendously upgraded in the storage and environmental protection and drainage and everything. That goes along with reconstruction is a much better situation for the property. And certainly, I think we can make a pretty quick argument that's not substantially more detrimental than what's already there. And with that, we have a decision prepared in front of you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have department comments or not?
You have a new department comment from Conservation.
Where is that?
In the folder, it's in the card.
Oh, okay.
In the Board of Health, sorry. Thank you. Both, both, Board of Health has a number of conditions, they've all been incorporated.
Okay. Why don't we start with department comments?
The ones are Board of Health and Conservation.
Board of Health and Conservation. All right, Board of Health. This one was from August 28th. Board of Health, at a regularly scheduled meeting on August 27th, approved the application for site plan approval, special permits for the above referenced, addressed with the following 22 conditions.
So, without reading all 22, a lot of them have to do with contamination in and around the site, migration to be sensitive during reconstruction. So, all of, they have a lot of conditions about LSP monitoring and other things like that. But we have incorporated all of those conditions within the decision.
Okay, so the, where have them, they've been incorporated? So, I don't have to go through every one of them.
Yes.
And then CONCOM, you said?
Yes.
Yep.
CONCOM has no comments.
Maybe they have new ones.
Let's see.
Should be the last sheet.
It says, "Conservation Commission has substantially, substantially completed its review of these two projects, and it is expected that the order conditions will be approved for both projects at the September 12 Conservation Meeting." There's no, there's no, there's no comments.
But they've substantially completed their review. They'll be ready to act at their next meeting. And we have, in our decision to incorporate any of the, recommend the conditions that they have in their decision.
Okay, so their comment is that they have no comments.
Their comment is that they're done talking about it.
Comments are coming.
Done reviewing the project and they're...
Okay, thank you, Joe. Jack, do you have any questions?
No, the previous public hearings and Subcommittee meetings, all my questions and concerns have been addressed.
Okay, Paul?
No, it's gonna be a wonderful upgrade, because that has been a tough site for a long time, and nothing you could do about it really much. But so this is gonna upgrade that whole area, so that's good.
Oh, I'm good.
Madam Chair, no comments, concerns, job's well done, looking forward to seeing the project completed.
Phil?
No comments, thank you, Madam Chair.
Ernie? I also have no comments, except that I'm very much looking forward to the upgraded site. I think it's gonna look so much better, and it's what Burlington should have. So, thank you.
It's all good, thank you.
Let's see. Motion.
Start on page three.
Okay. It's just to close the public hearing, motion to close the public hearing, is that?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, seven zero.
Motion to approve the request of Town of Burlington for a special permit pursuant to Section 6.1.1.1, alteration of a nonconforming use of the zoning bylaws to permit a new DPW facility at 1-3 Great Meadow Road, subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit A attached.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, seven zero.
Madam Chair, make a motion to close the public hearing on Item B, the site plan?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, seven zero.
Make a motion to approve the site plan application of the Town of Burlington Department of Public Works, property located at 1-3 Great Meadow Road, to permit the construction of a new 40,000 square foot Public Works operation building to support an office area, employee facilities, workshops, vehicle storage, and additional site improvements, as reflected on the site plan entitled, Town of Burlington, Massachusetts Department of Public Works Facility, Planning Board Site Plan Review, Site 2, 1-3 Great Meadow Road, prepared by Weston and Sampson, dated June 19, 2019, consisting of 14 sheets, subject to the following provisions, terms, and conditions.
Can you just, can you give me the date of these plans?
What's that?
What's the date of the plans right here? It's not June 19th, so it's August something?
August 30.
August 30, okay. So, just revised to August 30.
Revised to August 30, 2019.
We had them electronic, I just forgot to revise them.
As printed.
Thank you.
Do I hear a second? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, seven zero.
And now you move to page 11.
You want a motion to close the public hearing, see special permit, take?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, seven zero.
Motion to approve the request of the Town of Burlington for a special permit pursuant to Section 6.1.1.2, expansion on nonconforming use of the zoning bylaws to permit a new DPW in parks and recreation facility at 10 Great Meadow Road, subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit B attached.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, seven zero.
Madam Chair, make a motion to close the public here on Item D, the site plan?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, seven zero.
Make a motion to approve the site plan application of the Town of Burlington Department of Public Works for property located at 10 Great Meadow Road, to construction of a new 28,000 square foot Department of Public Works and Park of Recreation Facility, consisting of employee facilities, workshops, vehicle maintenance, vehicle storage, a wash bay, and additional site improvements as reflected on the site plan entitled, Town of Burlington, Massachusetts Department of Public Works Facility, Planning Board Site Plan Review, Site 1, 10 Great Meadow Road, prepared by Weston and Sampson, dated June 19, 2019.
Revised to August 30.
Revised to August 30, 2019, consisting of 14 sheets, subject to the following provisions, terms, and conditions.
As printed.
As printed. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven zero, great.
Well, thank you very much, and we're gonna get going as soon as we can on this project. Thanks again.
Terrific, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, thank you.
Moving on, we're trying to move on. Here we go. Our next item is, item 7E, a continued public hearing, petition to amend the Northwest Park Plan Development District zoning bylaw provisions submitted by Norblum Company. Welcome.
For the record, Madam Chair, Todd Fremont Smith with Norblum. With me is Robert Buckley, who's a world famous real estate permitting attorney, based here in Burlington.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To my left is Todd Fremont Smith, who I don't know what he is, but no.
It's nice to be amongst royalty.
It is, it is, right, thank you. First of all, before we begin, I think both of us would like to echo the Chair's comments concerning Josh. I knew there was something up when you got your haircut, Josh. But I thoroughly enjoyed you over the last six years. I mean, we are gonna miss you. You're not that far away, you're working with some very good people, came out of Lexington. And, you know, it's always, it's always very good to get out there. You know, reminds me, before I was a lawyer, I worked at the Federal Reserve Bank in New York City. And they used to have a motto that they're putting, they're putting good people out into the system, and Burlington is putting good people out into the system. So, you know, it will be good for the Commonwealth, it'll be good for the town of Danvers. And I look forward to crossing paths, paths with you in the future. And it's been a pleasure.
Thank you very much, thank you, Don, appreciate it.
Since we were here last, we have been to the zoning bylaw review. We've been to the land use. I have to get all these committees and gone through many of the issues that were raised at Planning Board. We've worked extensively with your staff on questions that have come back to us. I think we've addressed many of the issues. We've had some, talked in a infomercial today.
BCAT interview, yes.
Interview, we've prepared some material for Town Meeting members. We remain excited about the prospects of this, because I do think it is a unique opportunity to try to do something. I do wanna make one thing clear, that this will not be instantaneous. If Town Meeting were to approve this, there's a lot of work that has to be done. This is the first step along the journey. We have to, first and foremost, convene a group of representatives of the town to develop the guidelines, the agreements that will govern how the units will be allocated, managed, controlled, and the criteria for selection, which is no easy task, because I'm sure there'll be many goals. And one thing that was enlightening to me, which I think was probably enlightening to you also, Todd, and many others, that there's a real educational process that has to be undertaken, that a lot of people, and you're confronting that, understandably, with senior citizens, don't understand how this works. And they're, they're at a stage of their life where there's uncertainty, and you're asking them to address issues that they're concerned about, and it's changed. But when you talk to people who actually go into these places, and I've, I was with someone last night who specializes in this, in this field, and they're doing, they're from upstate New York, who are doing projects across the country. And they reaffirm that what they do internally is when they do these projects, they actually have seminars where they, they work with senior citizens in the town to educate them how to, how to, one, qualify, and two, once they're in there, how to manage their assets and live the rest of their lives in a very positive and comfortable manner. And my own personal views without, I'm speaking for Robert Buckley, not Norblum Company right now, is there's something socially wrong when people cannot live in the communities where they've spent 50 or 60 years. And I think this is an opportunity to experiment with something. And you're in a catbird seat, you control everything here, because you, through effective planning, have insulated yourself from having to comply with, or have the fear of a 40B. You've been very aggressive over the years. So, you make the rules, and people have to react to it. But this is an opportunity to do something experimental. So, to that end, we have prepared a formal written document, a letter, that sets forth some of the things that we've come out of the, of our discussions. I don't know if you've distributed that?
We have, I think it was passed out.
We have it.
Right, that sets forth our commitment.
I have it, I haven't passed it out yet.
You have not passed it out?
Well, I'll, I'll talk about it first.
Do you want me to summarize it, or?
Sure.
Thank you. The letter, and we gave a copy to Sherry, there's one typo in it. It should be zoning bylaw review, not bylaw review committee. So, for the record, you could quote me on this, you can, if BCAT marked the spot in the tape, it's zoning bylaw that a committee should be put together, consisting of various representatives of the town, if this is lucky enough to pass Town Meeting, that representatives of various groups in town should be selected to work with the developer to develop those guidelines, and we're committing to doing that. And going through that process, we're also committing to provide the town with up to $25,000 to hire the necessary professionals and consultants to assist you. And those consultants could be legal counsel, it could be someone versed in some of the things I was just talking about, to, you know, what type of educational transitional advice you need. Not that you don't have a very robust and strong senior citizen program right now, but there are a lot of issues that are beyond the scope of what people are doing. But that money will be made available to assist you in that, that aspect of it. It will address the, your ability to, at any given time, at your discretion, if you decide that, you know, we don't need it, there's no demand, you could flip those units to what is called subsidized housing inventory units, should you so desire. But hopefully, over time, you'll come up with an agreement that will govern the operation and management and criteria for qualification of targeted, senior targeted residents. There'll be an annual review, what, we had talked about funding that, but Todd indicates that they have professionals, they do it on their own now with consultants, that we'd make those consultants available to work with the town, to do an annual review to make sure that those agreements comply with applicable federal and state laws, so the town isn't in trouble, or they're not in trouble in terms of discriminatory laws or compliance, because laws change. So, that there's always a review and working with the town and educational programs. And as we go through that negot, I don't wanna say negotiation, but that preparation of the documentation that will govern the operation, there'll be other issues that we come up with that we say, geez, we didn't think of that. I think that it's safe to say that the Norblum Companies will be responsible to try to make that happen. So, I think that's what we're, we're here to say, and we've committed that to writing, and you've signed it, right?
Correct. So, we're very excited about the possibility of creating this new pilot program, this senior, and I won't say senior, I did meet with Marge McDonald, we toured the Huntington. She felt the need started around 60, age 60, which is not, which is not old. And so...
Thank you.
The ability to transition into, you know, a maintenance-free lifestyle, with parking under the building, with elevators, and to live on a flat level, with amenities right next door, she, I won't speak for her, but it was a good showing. And we both are excited to work on this, and I don't wanna speak for her, but we do believe that the need is, is there, the market's there. And if the buildings are kept at a reasonable size, which we've committed to, you know, you're only talking about 15 or 16 or 17 of these units at a time. That is not like there's a huge bucket of units that we have to fill up somehow. I do think there are people who, who will take advantage. We're seeing that elsewhere in the market. We manage a property in Newton where we're seeing a lot of empty nesters. Even at the Huntington, we saw, because the parking's under the building, just because it's, 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 the design lends itself to not climbing up a lot of stairs and not shoveling snow off your car. We did see a lot of empty, we do see a lot of empty nesters there. And those tenants love being there, they love being across from Wegmans. They're very sticky, they're not transient, they stay a long time. They're excited to be in the building and be around younger people. It's a community, they're not lonely, there are always things going on in the building. So, I think there's a potential here for really a model program, which I think, you know, I'm actually thinking about doing this in other communities if this, if this works, because I think the market's there. So, and we're both, we're not going anywhere, hopefully, and, you know, I think that we work well with the Town of Burlington, and we'll continue to craft this program that I think will be a model for other communities. Hopefully.
Thank you. Kristen?
Sure. We had a meeting last Tuesday, was it last? I think so. Losing track of time. And Labor Day doesn't help. So, we had a meeting last Tuesday with some members of the Board of Selectmen, members of this board, the assessor, as well as the housing, affordable housing chairman, I don't know what the fact was titled, but Jim Doherty from, who has dealing with a lot of our affordable housing, current affordable housing in town, as well as members of the Landes Committee and the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee, and Marge McDonald from the Council on Aging. The reason to get this group together was, was twofold. It was, one, just to make sure everyone's aware of the efforts that we're trying to put together for some local option. And the second was that there's a lot, there's a very large role for the town in making this happen. Half of it is getting the units and trying to figure out this, and the offer of trying to get the, get someone in to try to help us as a town figure it out. But just as Grandview has been for us, Grandview came, we rezoned Grandview in 2001 of that area. We built, we permitted it in around 2006, and around the same time, we created the criteria. So, therefore, between the zoning and creating the local option criteria was a very long time. But at the time, we were hovering around 12%, and we knew we had some wiggle room to offer something outside of that, under the state regulations, which have very low asset limits. And that frankly, a lot of people didn't qualify, especially if they were selling their house. So, Grandview does allow you to exempt the sale of your primary residence. It has a higher asset limit for your assets beyond that. And I think that we're looking to... And I think that we're looking to try to develop something that allows for those that are, that do want to downsize from their house and have some options, especially for what we're hearing quite a bit of, of the single-family elevator protected garage space. So what we have, what we have here, and what I've kind of bulleted in your staff report, gets to also what was described in the letter. But just to kind of review, that we're looking at 300 residential units of housing. 13, they've agreed at this point to 13% maximum of 39 units to be affordable to assist the town in coming up with these criteria and eligibility criteria and local option for affordability and affordability for our seniors. They have offered $25,000 for us to retain a consultant. We also have agreed that these units will stay on that, in the rent threshold at the 80% median income, which is set by the state for the metropolitan statistical area. And so that will always be consistent with a number that's already set. We don't set it. How we want to deal with that locally, whether we want to subsidize it even more with some other money the town might have, that's up to us. We can certainly do that. That's in our control, but that's something that we need to figure out. Also, it is in our authority that if we at any time just want to make these subsidized housing inventory units, we can do that. The last couple pieces, so the $5,000 per year, so I had written this and then talking through it a little bit. I would agree that for monitoring, the town has used a third party, Norblum's used a third party. So somehow, if we can reach agreement for a third party to be monitoring some of that and helping us do education as well, I think we're all for it. So however that works out, we agree on what it is that we want with that. So, you know, instead of just writing a check and we have to figure it out, I agree that if we can figure out someone else to help us do that, that's better. Also, as we discussed on the very first hearing, that the units, you know, A, B, whatever it is, but really, what's important about a residential unit? That it's within somewhere where you feel like you're in a neighborhood. You have something around you. You're close to open space, close to amenities, and yet it's walkable. So that's kind of a criteria that we want to continue to discuss. And then the last piece of the, you know, that no, 300 units isn't one just big giant building. So in our feeling, we, it was a very good first start with the meeting we had last week. I did have a follow-up email from a member of the Board of Selectmen that was very excited about, number priest, who was excited about the innovative option of trying to figure out a way that we can accommodate kind of this group of seniors that may be ineligible for units such as the 40B units that were just advertised. And I know there was some disappointment in the amount of people that responded. But we have a lot of people that are just in that middle ground where it's, they can't afford, you know, moving out and then staying in town, but the asset limits are way too high. So to really figure out what, where people are and how we want to structure this, I think, is important. So, and I think, you know, and I see members of zoning bylaw review, and I'm not sure if they want to update you guys on those meetings or if you guys were, I wasn't at either land use or zoning bylaw review. But from the feedback I did get, is that those meetings seem to go very well and in favor. My, I guess, comments on this is I think we have a lot figured out. And I know we have kind of hard commitments from the applicant already. And I think there is a lot of onus on us to get this together. And if we have money, money for a consultant to really help start doing that, I think it's the better we can get started rather than waiting. And our staff recommendation would be that I think we do have the pieces, the building blocks there, if you're favorable to housing and this opportunity. I think we have the building blocks there to get us there. So I would, we have, we have both recommendations, but we have a favorable recommendation based on the bullet points that I just outlined. And that would be our recommendation to the planning board.
Thank you, Kristen.
Chris Hannah-Finn from Veterans was also at that meeting.
I also handed out a little sheet. I know Member Gaffney in particular was asking, what are the rents for this affordable program that we're proposing? And as of now, the average market rent at a building like the Huntington's $2,900. It's not cheap. But the average affordable rent based on those guidelines that Ms. Kazner mentioned would be $1,400. So that's a $1,500 a month discount to market.
Is that for the two-bedroom or what was it?
Average. It's usually 50% ones and twos. But I just wanted to give a sense of the scale of the discount. So it's about $58,000 a month or $700,000 a year. In terms of discounted rent, that would be helping to make this program, it's significant. It's significant money. And over time, of course, over 10 years, it's, so, but that's the way the affordable things work. But I just wanted, as a sense of the discount to the Burlington senior community, potentially with 39 units, it's real money. So.
All right. Thank you. Ernie, would you like to start us off?
Sure. I've tried to attend all the meetings that we've had on this Northwest Park thing. I think it's a very good idea. Might even be able to convince my wife to move in there someday or another. But I'm in favor of it. There was some talk about master lease or whatever. Is that, that's gone, right? Or not? Were we getting down to the meat?
Document to do it, but it was too complicated for people. I think generically, let's let it, let's let the consultants, they may wind up there, but let's let them, let's let the, your town's advisors tell you what to do.
We have the commitment that we control.
Yes.
Right. I think that's the big thing in this whole thing.
That's how HUD does it. That's how HUD does it. But let your consultants tell you how to, the best way to handle it.
I think the biggest thing in this whole thing is that the town would control the units, the 13 or 14 or 15 or 22%, was that what it was? That units would be put forward for, in perpetuity, for affordable or if for some crazy reason we signed ourselves falling closer to the 10%. We could always repurpose those units. So I have nothing further to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernie. Belle?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of things I noted during the conversation here was that there was an agreement of the 13%. My recollection in going to a subcommittee meeting was that that was the starting point. And that hasn't been moved off that. So I think the agreement was, it's not agreement, it was just where the applicant had set themselves. And the, I think the land use had talked about proposing that to be 15 where our current, our current bylaw is, just kind of on the back of an applicant type of thing, if you go from 15%, you get 45 units from 39. You're increasing your monthly discount about $9,000 from 58.5 to about $67,000 maybe, and then you're about $800,000 a year. Which, if you look at the big picture, you know, you're going to make a ton of money and your rents are not going to stay stable at that point. Your rents are going to go up over time. So my thought is that if, to go to the 15 would certainly put me in a different position than I currently am now to where this particular proposal is conflicting with what we are agreeing with our master plan. And for me to kind of get over that, I need, I need a carrot. And what I'm seeing here is not necessarily a carrot. You've got the 39 versus the 44. And the other note that I made here, there's that discussion about how the rent due to Norblum for each individual unit under the agreement shall be less than the applicable, right? And that, so that the rent's got to be less than that 8% for the mass, for the mass housing affordability, right? So it's got to be, the rent's got to be less than what that level is. Kristen, is that what you were telling me?
No, it's, in no event can it be less. So, so average affordable rent is $1,400 a month. That it needs, we can't say to people, oh, we're going to offer it for $1,000 a month.
Unless the town wants to subsidize.
You want to subsidize it, but that would still make it that, whatever that number, that, in this scenario, $1,400 a month. So it, that's where we need to stay.
In other words, we can't require them to offer these units at less than what the affordable units are offered for.
Unless we're willing to, I mean, we could also say that we'll offer some at 16 and some at 12. You know, but overall, they need to, they need to make whatever that would be. However that mechanism is that we figure out. But that standard mechanism needs to be the 80% median income run.
I was reading it slightly different. I was thinking, you put in there, it can't be more than that. And it certainly could be less if they want to, certainly subsidize it themselves. I just kind of read it, I read it differently on that one. And then I, just my general question, again, I've never been on town meeting. This is going to town meeting, so isn't there a sponsor that's going to be from town meeting that's going to propose this, or how does that happen? Anybody can, applicant, anybody can do that?
Yes. So we're just recommending to town meeting. It's their decision.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to preface my remarks by saying that I love the Third Avenue project. I think it's beautiful. I think it's a, it's a signature of Burlington. And my interest in this particular project was the affordable units. As we all know, Burlington has a crunch on affordable senior housing. And our whole housing cycle, in fact, which we learned at our housing forum from kids coming out of college all the way through our seniors and elders, the system, we need work. The good news is, we're not unique. This is a regional problem. And I applaud our efforts to try and get ahead of the problem with creative solutions such as this. And I was all on board for this project until our last subcommittee meeting when Chairman Selectman Runyon voiced his remarks about what's happened on Corporate Drive. And they haven't gotten the response on those affordable units that he was hoping for. And I really took his comments to heart because Mike is someone who is heavily involved with our senior community. And I've really been wrestling with this since that meeting. And I tried to think of all the different ways I could think of it, and I turned it to my own personal experience with my mother. My mother is someone who, if she lived in Burlington, would be a target for this type of development. She recently sold her home, and we moved her into a retirement community where she has, it's a separate retirement community where there are units and apartments, and they're all seniors. And they all have separate units, and it's just seniors. There's no other types of people, and she loves it. They have community events. She's made friends that she drives to church. And I take her experience and I put it, and I look at the Huntington and the Tremont, and I just don't see my mom wanting to move into something like that. Some of the concerns Selectman Runyon brought up was sticker shock too. I think we really need to get out, if we're going to move forward with something like this, we really need to get out in front of our seniors and educate them because these are people who have owned their houses for years, who don't pay a mortgage. And even though $1,400 a month is affordable, and that's great compared to $2,900 a market, they're going to see that and say, no, no thanks. I can't do that. I'm not going to leave my home to do that. So I'm having a lot of issues with this proposal. And again, I love what Norblum has done. I think you're a great business partner for the town. But I'm having my reservations here on this one. And it's just because of what's happening on Corporate Drive. And I think that we need to, maybe, I don't know, maybe we can do better. Maybe we can step back from this, make a committee of people with Marge McDonald's group and really take a look at doing it right, instead of, this feels like a Band-Aid to me. But I don't know, how would you guys address the concerns Selectman Runyon had about the lack of response on Corporate Drive? How come that's not, how can we say that's not going to happen here?
Well, I could tell you because I did the Corporate Drive project. One of the problems is that it's a separate animal because it's under the state guidelines and the requirements and the application is totally different. And the senior citizens, when they see the application, they get, quite frankly, they get scared. It's a complicated application. And they are asked to divulge a lot of personal information to third parties that they're not necessarily comfortable divulging that information to. And it's really, your last comment, it's an educational process. And I think that that is key, that you have to have that educational process. And you have to have that outreach to let them know that this is a locally controlled, locally selective process. And the application has to be streamlined. And the amount of information that's being divulged has to be simplified.
But do we have a plan for that? Out of those, you know, the $25,000 for the attorney and $5,000 for the consultant, where in that money, where is our plan for that? To educate these people and let them know, this is a good deal. Because I think, in theory, it is. But we have to let them know that and educate them that. And if we don't make that connection...
I think the scale of what we're proposing, we're also saying we're going to do smaller buildings, right? I mean, the one, the building on 3A is large. It's a large building. I don't know how many affordable units were there, but...
60 something.
63. So we're talking about maybe bringing on, you know, 15, 16, 17 at a time, 20 at a time.
There were no amenities around there, but also, Mike...
I think they did get 21 applications for those. I mean, I think we've not had a problem filling the affordable units at Northwest Park. They go like this.
Can I take just a second just to address some of the concerns? Because your point's well made, and I get that. And I, you know, having spent as many years as I had on the Senior Housing Options Committee, it's a very complex, it's not, it's not just a very simple, it's not a simple, like, you know, cookie kind of thing where, you know, your mom, is she single? Probably single. Her needs are going to be different than a 60-year-old couple who wants to just get out of the house from having to maintain and do all the things to move into apartment. They may be on a younger mindset. They want to be in the middle of a mix of, you know, walking down and going into a different restaurant maybe tonight, and then tomorrow night we do this. Or it's, the needs are complex. And I could see my mom being in yours, you know, her situation probably more so. But if, you know, I'm not that far away from being of the age group that would go in there. And I'll be honest with you, I wouldn't want to be going into a senior housing. I'd rather go into something like this. And it's, you know, it's one of those things.
You're a kid.
No, but it's, to me, there is nothing like this available. That Corporate Drive doesn't compare to this particular concept. This concept is very unique. To me, it's a great opportunity. If it's done properly, it's a step in a direction that's going to fill a tremendous void in Burlington.
So how are we going to get that word out?
That's the process, Mike, where you bring all those groups together, the various components of the town, and you develop the template, you develop the outreach program, you bring the consultant onboard. That's why I wanted to, I wanted to dissuade upfront the idea that this is going to happen overnight. This is going to be developing the guidelines, developing the outreach program, developing, the legal documentation is one thing, but what's the educational process? What's the target audience?
That's the key right there. What's the target audience?
I think Joe is correct. This is not for everyone. But I think that sitting on the master plan committee, one of the things that came out was, what are the options? There are options for various components of your community. And this is one option that doesn't appeal to everyone.
It's a senior option that has not even been close to addressed in the town yet.
And I would submit that Corporate Drive was a totally different project and that it was, you know, it was put together as a 40B. And the outreach is, was a totally different outreach. It wasn't targeted for seniors. It was targeted for a local preference, but it was targeted as an affordable project. So that's a totally different marketing scheme and totally different outreach.
But the guidelines are different. But it is crux. It's the same thing. You're selling your house, and you're moving into a bigger building with a lot of units, with affordable units. At its crux.
I think one of the things that makes a huge difference in this case is what you just said. You're selling your house. If you're selling a house in Burlington, you almost automatically do not qualify for a 40B because there is no house in Burlington that's going to sell for less than $250,000. So if you sell your house for $500,000, you no longer qualify for one of those units. All of those seniors just get pushed aside. In this case, because we're doing it ourselves, we're going to, we can exempt the sale of the primary residence. So people can feel comfortable. They're going to sell their house that they've invested in all these years, and they're not going to lose that. And it goes in their little nest egg, and they can still qualify for this type of housing, which is very unusual, I think.
It's really unique. There's nothing, I haven't seen anything like it.
I think, Mike, if I remember correctly, you had to leave before the meeting was over. Is that correct? And I, like you, was shocked that when I heard Mike say they only had 21 applicants. But there's two, you're talking two different animals, I think, anyways. You're talking Corporate Drive, you cannot, there's no amenities you can walk to. In this particular case, you would be able to walk to Wegmans, get your groceries or around the corner.
Sticker shock is the same when they see the rents compared to what they live on now.
That's where you're correct, though. The education, and Marge agreed, the education has to be there. Because really, when you sit down and figure everything out, even if you're sitting in your house with no mortgage, you're paying fourteen hundred dollars a month.
I've dealt with this in my business a lot, actually. More so, you know, in the recent past than I would choose to do, actually, to be honest with you. I've had to sit with many seniors at the point in their lives where they really need to figure out what their next step is going to be. And they're at a point where they can't handle the house any longer. So where am I going? And I've sat with them and I've gone through it financially with them and shown them, educated them. But not, they're not going to have the, you know, you're going to have to get that opportunity to educate them. But I've had them in my office and sat with them and educated them. And then by the time it's all said and done, they're like, actually, I'm not going to be spending any more money than I am right now when I, when I think about the taxes I'm paying and I think about my heating bills I'm paying, my insurance I'm paying, everything I'm paying. And now I'm going to have a chunk of money in the bank that's going to help me with any deficiency I come up with or any deficit I come up with on a monthly basis, if any at all.
I think, Mike, it was the same meeting where Marge McDonald made the comment that what she sees happening is that people go from their single family home into assisted living at thirteen to eighteen thousand a month. They don't have that, was that the meeting?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, it was, definitely.
That's a different. Nursing home is thirteen, eighteen. Assisted living is not.
Yeah, but I know.
Nursing home is thirteen to fourteen.
But it was like, that's what happens.
Well, she was saying that you could rent an apartment like this, brand new apartment with fourteen hundred and then bring in some help. Someone would stop by every day, a couple times a day, much cheaper than being in a.
And then assisted living is, I mean, if, you know, the assisted living facilities, if you want to get into a decent assisted living, you're talking at least five thousand dollars a month. You're getting a little room. You're getting a room that you're going to share the common area with everybody else.
Her point was she felt that this market was, that, that, she would like to see it written sixty plus. And sixty's not old. I mean, I think Bob's right. There's, there's, there are a lot of people that just, you know, with the kids are gone. They, they've, they've got a lot of equity in the house. Maybe they want to not spend their weekends cutting grass or shoveling snow. And this is, this is appealing to people. We're seeing this in other markets where there's a very deep pool of people who are happy. And maybe they live here, you know, seven months out of the year and they have a place in Florida. I mean, they're different, that's a different category as well. But there, the market is very large and there are a lot of, you're only talking about fifteen or eighteen units at a time in this program. The buildings take eighteen months to build. We've got time to, we have to permit them, design them, build them. We have time to work with Marge on the outreach, so.
The reality is it, it needs to be, needs to be done properly. If it's done properly.
And it's one option.
And it's one option. And you've got other options available in the event of that. But I, I, I really believe the concept that we're looking at right here is something that is, is, is a tremendous need in the town. And we don't have it. And I don't know of anywhere around, quite honestly, that has it, that's close enough. But I wouldn't want to leave Burlington and I would think about an option like this. And I think it's a, you know, I mean, it's, it just, you're going to, you're going to understand, you're comparing, when you, as Ernie said, not only location-wise and amenity-wise, but you're comparing apples to oranges when you're talking about forty B and qualifying for forty B. And then the people that qualify for forty B and, you know, a lot of times they're in situations where it just overwhelms them to even fill applications and things like that.
Joe, I'm not looking at the qualifications. I'm looking at the education, what people want, how people feel when they leave their home of fifty years. And go into a, into an office park, basically. That's where my hesitation is.
Well, it's true, but the point is, it's one option. Not everybody who leaves their home is going to go here, but, but you have the other options available as well. This is one option we don't have.
It's not for everyone, obviously. I mean, my parents are in their eighties. They live in a building somewhat similar to this. They don't have the same amenities nearby, but they live in a building where there's a, a mix of people. They moved there because they wanted single floor living with a garage under and they don't have to shovel the snow and all of that. And they like being in a, in a building where there are children that come trick or treating and other young people and older people, and they like that mix. It's just, it's a personal preference. And some people won't like this. But I, I do think that this is a very unique opportunity. We've talked a lot about the need for affordable senior housing. And we came to the conclusion after many meetings that the only way we can do this is if the town is, is partnering with someone to do it. Because if it's just market rate, our seniors can't afford it.
You're in control.
Yes. So I, I think that the education process is very important. I think that that's something that we're going to have to put both time and money into. We're going to be working with Marge and with other members of the community to help us reach the people that we're trying to reach. And then we're going to need to bring in probably some kind of expert, some financial expert. I don't know, maybe Joe can do it. It sounds like Joe can do it.
Well, I have a feeling, quite honestly, the, the demographic that's going to want to go here, I don't think you're going to get them. I mean, I'm just saying, I don't believe you're going to get them through the COA. You know what I mean?
I think it's a mixture. You may get some, but you're right.
You may get some. All of them are not going to be reached through the COA.
Can I just remind this board, and I've done it every meeting, shortly, you're going to get six hundred thousand dollars. When, when they open.
From Corporate Drive.
From Corporate Drive. There's nothing wrong with taking a portion of that. It's, it's your money. But that is for housing. There's nothing wrong with maybe developing some educational process, you know, processes or programs or looking at other options. This is one option. You could be in the foreground, I mean, the forefront of developing housing options. I mean, that's, that's a nice seed money to begin stuff.
But we don't, don't feel like we're not taking your concerns seriously because I take them very seriously.
No, I think it's a great idea. I just don't think we have a plan. We can't even enforce parking in front of Town Grocery. How are we going to, we don't have a plan to ed, I mean, educate these people. And if the COA people aren't our target, those people should be our target. That is what we should be working on. That's where we should be focusing.
But, but Mike, I think that's the purpose. That's why, before even these things are permitted or occupied, that's why this, these groups are going to come together and develop this criteria. We're not developing the criteria.
Right, you also.
We're developing the criteria.
I mean, I think we were saying that even with the Grand View Farm, the criteria wasn't ones that actually finalized until not that long ago. And it was, it was a two thousand and one project, so.
We're not going to take that long.
No, but the point is it doesn't have to. It takes us, we don't finalize those agreements until three months before we open.
That's right.
So long to negotiate, just to figure out.
I'd love to have you participate in that. That, that would be wonderful.
I would love to. I would love to.
I'm sure there'll be that opportunity. I, I understand what you're saying and it's a little bit scary because we don't have all of the information in front of us. And I'm hoping that we can communicate, or you can communicate to Town Meeting, what the process will be that we will go through in order to get all of those details worked out. Because I don't really think it's appropriate for us to work them all out now. I think we do need to have a committee, committee that includes people from different boards, from Town Meeting, from COA, from, it's not up to us to decide.
Right. You, you'd miss something. You'd miss the concerns that you raised. You'd miss the issues that you, we wouldn't do it right.
We need a, a lot of different people involved working on this together so that we get many different perspectives.
I'll be honest with you, even some of the programs, like some of the senior, when they say senior programs, even within the rec department, the golf, you know, the over, whatever is golf league that goes on, those are very active people that would love to be in a place like that.
I really do, but I, I hear, my, my parents are eighty-seven and they're sitting in their five thousand foot Victorian in Melrose, in their kitchen. You know, and I'm like, what are you, what are you doing here?
Right.
My dad watches every Red Sox game and does puzzles and, you know, it's, it's just socially, I, I think the social aspect of this kind of thing is, is, is appealing.
Yes, and that's, and I know now I'm speaking out of turn because usually I go all the way down. But the things that are important to me about this is I definitely think the location is very important. Because I think that one of the biggest problems that seniors have is isolation. And especially when they're sitting at home in some suburban neighborhood where many of the neighbors that they are, they knew when they were raising their children are no longer there. And there's a serious problem with isolation and loneliness. And being part of a community where they can walk around and see other people is, is very helpful. I want them to be able to walk easily to the amenities that you have. I don't care if they're in A or B. I want us to work together to find the right location for the people that will be living there. I feel uncomfortable with the idea of this building being too far into what used to be called B. Heading toward, because then it's in an industrial park and there's, right, then there's. Who wants to live there when they could live closer to Wegmans and be able to walk to the store if they don't drive and all of that? So that's important to me. I wanted to ask, there was, I, I heard some confusing reports from the Land Use Committee. Something about, a discussion about a donation to the Housing Partnership. And I, I don't know, I didn't have the details and I don't want to speak out of turn. Could you fill me in?
Was during that discussions, when this was being put together, that, that collaboration, that, what the, if something were to come up, I think that what was meant to be said was that they would be agreeable to consider.
Yeah, and I think just specifically into member Gavney's comment, as we move the percentage up, it really, it destroys the financeability of the project. It reduces the likelihood it's going to get built, frankly. So what I offered, what I started to offer, and I got kicked under the table, but the idea was some other type of mitigation, which was not forever, was not a percentage of affordability. There was some other kind of gesture that was, could be, go towards the senior effort.
It has to be, and it has to be tied to the senior effort.
Yeah, that, maybe we'll get negotiated with the planning board at, at the, I didn't want to negotiate that with the Land Use Committee. I thought it was better.
Okay.
The mitigation payment of some kind.
But that should, that should, that should be, come out of those discussions that, as Mike was saying, on educational programs and.
So that was a comment that was made. I think the, the concept is valid, but it was just a comment that it sounds like it went around the kindergarten circle. It came out a different way because I don't recognize what I'm hearing, but.
Well, I don't, I, again, I didn't want to even say what I heard because I didn't, I wasn't sure and I heard more than one story.
As a carrot, as it were, to, to, to win hearts and minds. And I think it's, it's, it's not inappropriate with, with a large project to have some sort of payment that is just for the greater good.
So when is the right time for us to work on that? Because this is, I would think.
It happens at every planning board meeting. If, if I'm doing a project and you determine as a board that we need a new traffic light, I'm buying a traffic light, right? So I think it's just one of those things that we talk about as part of the, the, probably as part of the site planning process. Planning board approval condition, special conditions, or whatever they call it.
And I also think that when you have the agreement that's going to set forth the criteria and the programs, I think that's an appropriate time also.
Okay. I'm just trying to.
Madam Chair, may I get a shot at this?
Absolutely, but I, I don't want to, I don't want to come off of this yet. Because it sounds to me that you're saying you're open to making a one-time donation to the Housing Partnership, which we could use to perhaps subsidize senior housing work to help it, use that money to help educate our public. And, and that's something that I think is really important, very exciting. And I don't want to just leave that there and not seal the deal.
As long as we could tie it to the housing, what I don't want to, is amorphous.
I, I wouldn't want it to be amorphous either.
The number that was discussed was a hundred thousand dollars. So it was a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars to the Housing Partnership.
For the programs and stuff.
Or whatever they want to do with it, yeah.
Okay.
In lieu of.
In lieu of additional units.
Continued arm twisting to go higher and higher on the percentage, which really makes it harder. And, and, you know, Boston, for instance, was and still is, I think at thirteen percent. There's a reason that number, it just gets into the math and it just, it just ruins your financeability.
Right. But the hundred thousand dollars would toward, so it would add to that six hundred thousand dollars that we could then use for various purposes, but also possibly to subsidize seniors who can't afford the fourteen hundred or whatever it, it ends up being. Am I understanding you correctly?
Yes, but I'd like to see it committed to actual programs and stuff.
We've committed to two buildings, so is it fifty and fifty at the time, as part of the planning board process?
Okay, Kristen, how do we, how do we go about doing this? This is very important and I think that it's something that Town Meeting should know when they're considering this project.
So I hesitate, as I think you're hearing them hesitate as well, it's just, when you throw out a figure and you don't tie, I mean, you know, your whole rule is to approve projects, look at the, not approve project, but look at, review projects. Look at the impact of projects. Look at the nexus and proportionality of that impact of the project itself and negotiate mitigation to make sure that there's, you know, any, any negative impacts or any things that come out of this project are mitigated. So, and I think it's very clear with this project and what's already been put in front of us as to what we need to actually make this happen. Where I think we need to discuss, just, you know, are the numbers that are here, numbers? I think we all can agree on that we want to make sure we have a consultant to be able to develop a program. Is twenty-five thousand enough to do that? I think, you know, maybe it is, maybe it isn't. We need to figure that out. I mean, I think it's a very fair amount to be able to, to think about doing it. I just, you know, I, we haven't gone out to bid to figure that out, so. And then for the education per year, and as, as I mentioned, you know, how do we, if it's third party or five thousand dollars annually. So I think there's definitely goals that we want identified as, just similar to, you know, get a traffic light. I don't care if it costs forty-five thousand dollars or if it costs, we want the traffic light.
I understand that.
Just, but for, for this to offset the affordability, you know, what is it that we're looking for on the front end through the rezoning to make sure the program gets off the ground? And then what is it from the actual project and impacts that we need to mitigate? So.
Right. But Bill's concern is, Bill's not the only person who's voiced that concern. And that's going to come up on Town Meeting floor.
We're not going to tie, we're not going to tie it to thirteen or fifteen percent, all right? We don't want to tie it to a thirteen or fifteen percent because I don't think that really is appropriate. But I think what we're willing to say is that in connection with the, the programs that will come out of the consultant's work that we would commit to fund up to a hundred thousand dollars for programs and whatever.
To, to get this.
And I'm not saying that you would tie it to the thirteen or fifteen percent, but I do think Town Meeting is going to hear, okay, we're getting less than fifteen percent. Why are we allowing that? Oh, well, there, this, this developer is being very generous and, and giving us other things that are very important that will help this project. And I think that will help your case. If you're going to do it, why not tell everyone about it upfront and get the credit, right?
One D.
Yeah, so I think that's something.
We had just heard, we had heard things all over the place, what that hundred thou, and I, I just think it has to be tied to what the purpose is.
I agree.
In some way.
Yeah, so I, I, I will, will follow up with something like that, you know, programs that, a hundred thousand dollars would be tied to programs through the town to facilitate educational or other options for senior, for the town to develop other options for senior housing.
Okay.
Or subsidies.
My point is it needs to be tethered and there needs to be a nexus.
Agreed.
But I also don't want it to be so narrow that it's not something that through site planning, when we're right back here, we can try to, when we say, okay, well, here's a real challenge that we're having, can we use part of that for, to get, to make this work better? You know, so we'll, we'll work with them.
Well, I think perhaps we can ask Bob to work and Todd to work on some language that we can then consider. And you're going to want to have that ready before you go to Town Meeting anyway.
By the nineteenth.
The concept is fine. I just don't want to be.
I understand.
Can, can you go to fourteen percent? A compromised position between fifteen and thirteen? The reason, by the way, the reason I, you're only required to do ten percent affordable under the PDD provisions, right? Okay. So thirteen is a little bit of a leap. We do have, fifteen would be nice. Is fourteen workable? That's forty-two units as opposed to thirty-nine. That's three more units.
Well, I think they're saying, no, if they're going to finance it, but if you want to use some of the hundred thousand dollars to make it.
Well, I want them to, I want them to use.
A hundred was meant to be the bridge. If you'd rather have fourteen, it's more, it's harder for me, but if I pick up a couple of votes here, you know.
Hundred thousand is a one-time shot. Thirteen, fourteen is a perpetuity.
What were you saying?
Hundred thousand dollars is, a hundred thousand and, okay, it's gone. Fourteen percent is forever.
Right, correct.
I know that's tough, but on your side, but I don't, and I, I understand you have to sell it to your people too, but, but.
Yeah, I, I think you're absolutely right, Ernie. And when the subcommittee meeting I went to was like, so this, this is again in conflict with what, what master plan is. And it, I think it's a good concept.
Why is it in conflict with the master plan?
Well, because the idea of a master plan is not to have more multi-housing, right? Went to that housing, yeah, so that was, it's against, right?
That was, okay.
Scope, right? So then we're saying, okay, so now how, how bad do you want it? Scope, right? So then we're saying, okay, so now how, how bad do you want it? And you wanted a thirteen and that's where they have moved off of that. So now I, I take that as, that's where they're at. So, so I have to make my decision on this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Paul, thank you for your patience.
Remarkable, though. I've been criticized for talking too much, so I'm sitting here saying nothing. I did, though, spend like five hours a week ago going to two meetings. It was one in the morning, Kristen was there, that was very interesting, a lot of people. And then I went to land use at night because I'm interested in housing and I, I wanted to get as much information as I could because this is a little complex and different from something we've done up until this time. By the way, Mike was there and I don't think he went to land use, but I really appreciate at least one product of the Burlington School System because he's, because he's very thoughtful, he pays attention, and he must be an engineer or math major.
One, two, three, four.
Congratulations, Mike.
He'll appreciate it more.
The first thing I said... They're trying to distract me. The first thing I said, when, it was very nice because it went around the table, everybody goes, and when I was asked, I said, why not just make it fifteen percent? And they convinced me, and the reason not to, is that when we do that fifteen percent, the state controls who goes in because they have all these criteria and, you know, that they have to make on so forth. And this...
That's not, that's not tied, that percentage isn't tied.
If it's a forty B.
It's only if it's a forty B that's regulating. This is going to be a private, just a private deal, not private, but between the town. Doesn't matter if it's fifteen or...
It's my turn. That was my question. And the response was that it's going to be, you are contributing, allowing or whatever, to do this at thirteen percent? So I looked at it and I said, for thirteen percent, it's worth it on the town, for the town, to be able to control who goes in. Because, and Mike spoke about Mike Runyon saying that in the affordable that we have now, that on Corporate Drive, they only got a very limited number of applications for the total number available, which indicates to me that not everybody's a senior can take advantage of that or wants to. So this is a little different. This is controlled by the town. So the thing to me that was crucial as far as that was concerned is how it's going to be set up and how the town is going to control it. By the way, you did get a very favorable response from land use. I was surprised at, at the, the support that they gave for the idea. So to me, the thing that's important is how this is going to be set up. Because they made, I think, a legitimate point that if you sell your house, you no longer qualify for the affordable units that we have now because you've got too much money. So this is a situation where somebody, as they noted, a, a person in my situation could sell their house, could move into this affordable housing and not be disqualified. And the other point, which I hadn't really thought of, which they made fairly repeatedly, was that, and I was totaling up in my own head, how much it costs me per month now. And, excuse me, it, it comes up to that kind of figure, you know, four or five thousand dollars, with your real estate, electoral bills and everything else. So that I can see that there would be an attraction here, or there were people that could afford to move in here and still feel a little bit of independence. One thing that, one point that Mike made, Runyon made, and I think Mike would, would say that too, that the, many of the senior citizens have a very difficult time giving up that bond they have with their property. But if they were able to sell their property and still have some economic security, whether this worked out or not, I mean, there's hardly a lot in Burlington now. They have it in every week in the newspaper what the house they're selling for. And if you see a house that's sold for less than a half a million, you say, gee, that must have been one of the ones that were built in nineteen fifty and it's a one-bedroom. Because, no, really, because any lot now goes for a half million because they can buy it and make money by selling them in your own house. So in, in looking at this overall, my own, I said, why not just have the people that are controlling Grandview now do this? Because from what I hear, that seems to be working quite well. I mean, those units are full all the time, are they not? And the people that are determining who gets to get on the list and so forth are doing it in a way that seems to, I haven't heard complaints about it, so it seems to be acceptable to the town. So, but they felt that that wasn't the, the best way to do this. So that was the question that came from town meeting also, was how is it going to be set up and so forth. So to me, that's the key to it. Thank you for your attention.
Jack, could I just clarify one point? The twenty-one that keeps getting thrown around about the Davis project on...
Oh, yes.
Those are twenty-one for the lottery. That doesn't mean that there were only twenty-one applicants for the affordable units. That was just for the lottery.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
I thought that was the process to get into affordable units. You had to, you had to be in the lottery and get a number.
That was a local preference, the outreach. They're still getting applications for the affordable units. That was the local preference.
Initial, the initial lottery.
Lottery, but the, the other units are getting applications.
But from people outside Burlington.
People outside Burlington. All people in Burlington, they can still apply, but for the lottery.
That was twenty-one, okay. Jack?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, Corporate Drive to me is not geared towards Burlington seniors like the discussion that has been surrounding this. And that's why I was looking favorably on this because it was geared towards a preference for Burlington seniors. If it's just three hundred more apartments, I'm not interested. And as I'm reading through here, the only reference to senior citizens is to provide educated assistance to the senior citizens concerning the availability. It's not, the language so far is not restricted towards seniors, so I'm concerned this is not directly addressing the reason...
That's not the warrant, Monica, that's the letter, right?
I don't know. All I know is what we're being asked to approve and why.
I have, the letter's right here. It's a long letter to read in a hearing.
Are you reading this, Stafford Board, Jack?
This is all I got.
No, I know. The, the letter, well, we're passing the letter around. Jack, do you have other questions? Because if you want to take...
So the other question I have is...
It tended to be for a senior program, but over sixty. I don't, I think it's not just seniors, it's sixty plus.
I know what the discussions have been. But what I vote on and what town meeting is asked to vote on may be something different. I don't know. I haven't seen it. And, and my question is, who determines who will be on this committee that's mentioned and appoint, and what is the scope of that committee's authority immediately in an ongoing basis? I don't know. I, I do understand and appreciate that we can't here tonight, prior to town meeting, nail down every little aspect of it. But I certainly would like a little more assurance that this will go the way we've been discussing. And so far, and maybe it'll change when I read this, but so far, I have not been given that comfort level. We've identified the need for senior affordable housing. That's what the thrust was on this. I'm not fully seeing it now. And if it's just three more apart, three hundred more apartments, I'm not interested. If it's three hundred apartments, thirteen percent for seniors, now you got my interest. So I need some assurance that that's what it's going to be. I'll read this letter. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'm, I'm going to ask for audience, for questions from the audience in just a moment, but I do think, I think that we're very, very close, but there's probably a few items we need to iron out. And I hate to say this, but I think we might have to, have to continue this to the, the next September meeting, even though that's a very, very packed meeting. Yes, it is.
We can go first.
I, I'm hoping we can, I, I don't think there's a lot to iron out, but there's some very important items that we have to.
What is that, that's the nineteenth?
Nineteenth. Are there any members of the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Please come forward. Thank you.
Am I, am I on though? Sherri Ellis, town meeting member, also on the zoning by law review committee. So we have had a couple of meetings. Wanted to update you on our progress or discussions. It's been a great back and forth. We've, we've had a lot of issues brought up, questions asked, questions answered. We haven't voted on anything at this stage of the game. There's still a few questions out there. Jack was talking about the letter that you just received, which I had a brief glance of, but haven't read it yet. But we've actually looked at the, what they're proposing for the bylaw, which is what our job is as the committee. And there's the whole section in the special conditions which outlines exactly the senior local preference. And those are some of the details that a few of the committee members, anyway, still have some questions with. So we're still working on it. We have a meeting Wednesday, the eleventh, where we'll hopefully resolve our questions with the actual wording of the bylaw and vote on it because that's our last meeting before town meeting. And we'd also like to be able to give you our recommendation or our thoughts, our comments as a committee before your last meeting.
We would like that also.
I'm sure you would.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. With that in mind, I think we do need to continue, but let's make sure that we're all on the same page as to what we need to do between now and the nineteenth so that we can really wrap this up on the nineteenth.
We are planning an open house at the Huntington, just so if you'd like to come see the, the building, we'll get the, get that invitation out Monday at the latest.
When will it be? Is it daytime, evening?
It'll be evening. I'm thinking seven o'clock, six, six o'clock to seven thirty, that kind of thing. But if any, if any of the members would like to come walk the building with me, I'd be happy to show it to you, Michael in particular. I think it really, when you get in that building and you see what it feels like and you see that covered parking and the nice elevators and new kitchens, and it, it, it is appealing. It will be appealing to some people, not, not to everyone, as we both said.
Nothing is appealing to everyone.
If anything like the rest of the third half, I know you'll do a great job. And I just think we...
We appreciate all, this is an emotive topic in a lot of ways, and I, I think it could be a wonderful program, but I'll, we'll see you next time.
So let's just make sure we know what it is we need to cover before next time. I think one of the questions that the board needs to wrestle with, if I'm hearing correctly, is do we want fourteen percent or do we want a hundred thousand dollars for the housing authority? So I'm not asking your opinions now, I'm not asking to resolve it now, but that's a question that we all need to resolve. Yes, Ernie?
A hundred thousand dollars is only two years at the reduced price.
Probably, we can work that out. That's another detail. But Kristen, have you been keeping a running list of all the things that we're asking to resolve?
Yeah, so he's just doing the math. He's saying, you know, if you're talking long-term, you're looking for the long game or you're just looking for the short term?
Reduced supply.
Better deal for you, you're saying, the other way. Yeah, yeah. Okay, I hear you.
Yeah.
And I want your vote, I want your vote, so.
Right, well, we're gonna, we're gonna work that out. I mean, I don't want to take a straw poll right now, but Kristen, are there other items that we should, I know there are.
Sounds good, right, it sounds good, doesn't it?
I guess you're seeing my own...
Frustration.
Not frustration, your September nineteenth meeting is...
I know, it's crazy.
Massive.
I know.
And it's nine o'clock. So, no, no, I don't, I, I, but I just want to try to really figure out where we might be and if, I, I don't want to push to keep going, but it's just, you know, this board is a recommending body and it sounds like there is a lot of consensus to ideas. It's the question of what needs to be more specific, should it be more specific in our recommendation, that our recommendation includes that to reinforce options for seniors in town that might be in this position where they have too many assets, they don't fit in the forty B, is, is, in the opportunities that you guys already discussed, that this is kind of an opportunity that doesn't exist elsewhere in town. The other position, it's, should it be thirteen or fourteen percent? I mean, it sounds as if, if we say fourteen percent and they have to go and get financing for fourteen percent, that might be difficult. What's the difference of where?
Well, I'm not sure. I, I got the impression that Todd was saying that he could do that.
I, I think you're getting a strong maybe, but I might be reading the room wrong. But it, my, my point is, I, but I feel that there's a willingness to meet the difference, whatever we decide that might be, whether it's in the recommendation to town meeting through here or through the permitting, that when they come to us to permit as well as town, they also have to go back to town.
I understand that, but I do think some of these, I understand some of these details can be ironed out later, but some of them are really important and have to be ironed out before they go to town meeting. And I have no problem because, like you said, it is early and we have a short agenda. If we want to try and iron some of those out today, I would, I don't know what the will of the board is. Maybe we each want to weigh in on some of these questions.
Well, I just want to kind of tease it out a little bit of, if we want fourteen percent, what does that mean? And that, and Ernie has worked it out that it's for two years, three units for two years subsidized, right? Is that, and is that the difference? So...
So if, member Covino asked if we would split the difference and if, what if, what if we did, can we, what, what else would be left to iron out if we...
I don't know what you mean by, oh, go with fourteen, go with fourteen, okay. Is the will of, are the other members in agreement that as a board, we would prefer to see fourteen percent and then we're not talking about the donation to the housing partnership? Do we have agreement on that?
Well, I have a question, and that is, what's, what does the PDD say about?
Ten percent.
It says ten percent, the PDD.
Okay, thank you, okay.
Say that again, you said PDD says... I wouldn't fight over a unit.
If we ask for fourteen percent instead of thirteen percent, we, we are not going to get the one hundred thousand dollar donation to the housing partnership. I'm fine with that. I want to make sure everyone else is fine with that because it's an either or, I'm pretty sure.
Probably better if you financial...
Yes. Okay, so is there anyone who objects to that choice?
I don't. I would just like to point out that the commitment would be up to thirty-two or thirty-nine or up to forty-two. If they don't build three hundred units, it's going to be less than thirty-nine.
Be fourteen percent.
Fourteen percent. So if he builds, you know, two hundred and eighty...
Right, absolutely.
It's down, okay.
And we will build one building and then stabilize it, see how it goes, and then build, we won't do both at once.
Right, okay, so.
Just have to get a town meeting member to make...
It sounds like we're gonna, yeah. So we're looking for fourteen percent. What are the other outstanding issues? We talked, the committee is, is outlined in this letter, a suggestion as to who would be involved in the committee, and that's something I think can be ironed out later, right?
We can't tell you who.
I don't think that has to be ironed out tonight or before.
That's not their decision, that's ours.
What else do we have to iron out?
Land use continued, by the way, they didn't vote, so they're meeting again.
Everybody's looking for you guys.
I thought land use, they were going to meet again before.
Well, I mean, we are just, we are, our vote is to recommend favorably or unfavorably, as is land use's vote, as is zoning bylaws' vote.
Three individual votes.
Right.
You're not voting on anything, yeah.
Right. And Sherri, would you like to contribute?
Just a question for the members to consider.
Just a question for the members to consider, are you, you're considering the concept of this proposal, or are you recommending the actual warrant article? So you're, you're discussing this evening, anyway, but just as a person who reads the
Warrant article, yeah.
Words Matter, I just wanna have you look at them.
What we're discussing doesn't match the words.
Right. It's, well, the concept, and if that's what you want to recommend, is the concept and all of this to be worked out, but there is also the special conditions, that the 300 units is the part where they want to increase an extra 300 units, and then there's a percentage, and that's all fine. There's the special conditions that's talking about regular affordable units versus this senior local preference, and the town can determine, and these are the details you're talking about, but some of the wording that's in there is that you have 30 days from a certain point in time for the town to come up with that documentation.
No, 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 it says 30 days to tell us which way you wanna go. It's the 30 days to come up with the documentation, so we can start preparing.
Okay.
Where is all this language? Is this somewhere?
It's the language, and that's one of the things I'm concerned about. It seemed, the 30-day timeframe seemed very quick for a municipality to come up.
So that you can start, start preparing the document, no, 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 no.
We're gonna be voting on recommending or.
Once.
Today.
It says, in order to start the process, you gotta tell us which way you wanna go.
So, and that's a question that I, as a town meeting member, I'm speaking as a town meeting member instead of a sort of bylaw review.
We don't wanna wait eight months and get our permits, and then you say, yeah, we wanna go with SHI.
Well, the, the, the whole conversation that we're having is we want senior housing.
All right, then tell us that.
Well, well, that's exactly, but what is in the bylaws is that we have a choice. And I don't think town meeting wants a choice.
Right.
So I'm concerned with the wording in the bylaw. That's, as a town meeting member, I can't vote for that bylaws as it is, because it's giving the town a choice of regular affordable housing or senior affordable housing.
Right, and that's not what we want either.
And from what I understand from the committee members, and from what I understand from most of the town meeting members that I've talked to, nobody wants regular affordable housing.
I agree.
So I have concerns with the wording of the bylaw. So there's my point.
Yes, I agree with you.
Indirectly or directly.
Madam Chair, to, to that point, Jackson, do you have a question about, it didn't really say senior in there, or?
The only place I see senior in what is in front of us here, which is not the wording we're voting on, is senior citizens concerning the availa, you know, educating seniors concerning the availability and criteria for affordable units. It doesn't say that they're restricted to seniors or seniors get first preference.
Do we want it to?
Do we want what?
I don't think that's the town.
That within the scope of what was published in the warrant. What's published in the warrant is just up to 300 units.
The letter is, the letter, the letter is just, that's just our commitment.
What's, what's in front of town meeting to vote on?
The warrant article.
What is the warrant article saying?
It's in front of you.
39 units of affordable housing, senior housing, or a year designation, you can make them senior SHI.
Either or.
Okay.
Either or.
There's the warrant article.
Betsy, go ahead.
Yeah, Betsy Hughes, Precinct 7, zoning bylaw review committee. Just a, a comment to that, Jack. In Section 5, Number 4, is where it talks about the percentage, and it talks about X units, so that'll be converted based on.
You're talking in Article 10, Betsy?
Eight, I have on the zoning.
Oh, I don't, I don't have that, I just got this.
Is that part of the warrant article or the backup?
Warrant article.
The backup?
So it should, well, that's what I got, it's from Norvum, so it's there. Anyhow, it talks about, subject to all instances of federal and tax laws, and then it talks about the local senior preference units or affordable housing units, which is what Sherri was just referring to.
Right.
That by having the or, affordable housing units, it actually is not as directed at senior housing as maybe it, this discussion had alluded to. And maybe that particular portion.
But that, that's the idea that you may have the option over time to change back and forth.
So the question is, how specific, how strongly do people feel that this needs to be targeted towards seniors, or do you want the flexibility that at some point you might want a different population to be in there? And we talked in our meeting about maybe veterans, maybe fire people, maybe police officers, et cetera. So I think, just to clarify the wording here, which is, as again, the, I think our mantra is words matter in our committee, that this is the area, when you look at that, it does reference the seniors very specifically in the warrant article.
But not exclusively.
But not exclusively. So, you know, I think that's the point of discussion, that either it gets clarified and it's exclusive to that, or not, and, and the town needs to decide and give direction. I was suspect of Norvum as to which direction it needs to go in, but that's.
Through the master plan process, we identified the need for senior affordable housing.
Right.
Now, if that changes 20 years from now, we can go back and amend that to expand it beyond senior, but for now, I'd like to limit it to senior, because that was the identified need.
Yes.
Can I make one other comment, just a little off track? I wanna talk to, Mike, I haven't met you yet, but I appreciate your comments. A little personal sharing, I have just gone through the process of selling my home of 30 years in Lexington and moving to Burlington, what, four years ago? Hence, now I'm here, and you're stuck with me. So, but the last thing I wanted to do was move into an over 65 or 55 community. That's not my thing. I want, I like youth, I wanna be young as long as possible, and, and so, for me, it was not even an option to go into a, an assisted living or senior-only kind of community. So I just wanna say, as a personal experience, I've done it, I also have worked with my parents and in-laws, who wanted to go into one of those areas, and God bless them, they did, that's awesome. But to the point is, what I think the obligation of this community is, is to provide options to this targeted population, so that they can go wherever they feel comfortable. And right now, there is no option for something like this in, in Burlington. So I just wanna kinda throw my personal situation out there for you to think about.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I do wanna point out that the way it was drafted, it provides for senior affordable housing or affordable housing at your option.
Right.
Subject to federal and state law. If you just limited to senior housing alone, I'm not sure that in and of itself is a protected class. So I, I'm trying to balance the two, so, seen, you know, that you could just, just do senior, what if you don't have enough seniors that apply? What do you do then?
Well, and you're also saying that EG might not, they might flag it if you don't leave it a little open.
Right, right. I'm trying to protect.
So when you say you wanna, within the 30 days, you wanna know, you just wanna know the direction, but there's still, the options are still gonna remain open in the future.
That's right, that's right.
So it's not, we're not.
It's, it's gonna take probably 10 to 12 to 15 months to do all these agreements and everything. What we wanna do is start, we're saying, once the AG approves this, we want senior housing, start drafting.
But we also, according to what I'm thinking that you're saying, and I'm, you know, the option is either foreclose on that and change it in the future, if we wanna change that from senior to affordable, or senior to something else.
Right.
Or we craft the, the regulations such that.
I'll take the 30 days out, but I, I'm gonna assume we're starting from day one with senior housing. But I wanted someone to say, you know, start, start right away.
I mean, the criteria can be crafted such that it allows the option, right?
Right, yeah, that's why it's in here now, senior affordable housing or affordable housing.
So I think it just got confusing, meaning that, you know, we have to make a decision. You don't really need to make a decision, just what we'd like to know is this the direction you wanna start out with?
Which way you want us to go.
Right, you wanna start this way, but leave the options open for.
Well, you know, we're gonna start the process.
Why, why do you have to know ahead of time? Are you gonna build different units if it's senior affordable versus?
Yeah, we're gonna.
We need to craft the language.
We're gonna draft the language, hire the consultants, start preparing the documents and everything, you know?
Right.
If we're gonna be before the board, it's, it's the same units.
So, so what's the rush? It's gonna be 18 months before the ready for auctions to be after you decide to build, and you're not gonna decide to build right away?
You can help complex these, you know, all these issues are coming up.
I wonder, if it's gonna take you 18 months to craft it, I don't think Todd wants to pay you.
Whatever.
Well, no, but in other words, the answer to that 30-day thing could be, we'd like to, we'd like to start, we'd like to start out as senior, and in the event that we wanna change it, we want it, we want flexibility in there, right?
We were just trying to say, just tell us which way you want us to go, right away.
Right.
I wasn't trying to be.
But what, my point is that could, the answer could be start as senior, but we want the flexibility in the future to be able to make that change if we need to.
I was just saying, tell us to get going, tell us to get going.
And then that helps targeting the, the marketing for the units and how we wanna do it. But also remember that what is bulleted in the staff report, those, some of those items, those aren't, some of them, yes, are in the bylaw, but there's other things that are, are your recommendation for town meeting to consider, but also to be put in the memorandum of understanding between the town, and it's already been agreed that those items will be in the memorandum of understanding that they've offered. So, you know, you don't have in the zoning that you're gonna have, offer 25,000 for a consultant, that's in the memorandum of understanding with the, with the development team. But we do have certain things, like the 300 units and the 39 units, or the 14 percent. So, I mean, those, those numbers do matter for the bylaw itself, to Sherri's point, is the wording, but all, the other things are commitments that have been made to be developed within the MOU itself, so.
And we'll work with Sherri's group to tweak the language so she's comfortable with it before town meeting.
So.
The intent is to create a senior affordable program.
If we add to the bullets, senior, you know, certainly senior preference at this time, you know, 10 years from now, we'll reevaluate, or less than that, reevaluate, because it's at our, the town preference to determine.
Right, and we can define what senior means.
Right. And, and then the question is 13, or, do you wanna send your recommendation with 13 percent, 14 percent?
I think the board is saying they wanna send the recommendation with 14 percent. That's what I'm hearing, right?
Yep.
Yes.
And then on the specific, I mean, if there's some questions on the language, I certainly would encourage, and we may all attend, the zoning bylaw review committee to kinda make sure that, that sentence itself is crafted the way we need.
Because we're voting on more than just the language of the bylaw, we're really voting on what we would recommend be included in the memorandum of understanding, 'cause that's gonna go before town meeting as well, right? To supplement your case, right?
This, this is.
I don't know.
This is a zoning bylaw amendment or change, right?
Yes.
And that means that town meeting has to vote yea or nay.
Right.
But it also means that town meeting, five years down the road, could vote to.
Change it.
Change it, so.
Yeah.
Okay. And town meeting maybe should be reminded about that, so that it's not cast in stone, stone.
But we're being asked to vote favorably or unfavorably on what's written in the warrant.
I understand.
Not what's promised inside agreements.
No, no, no.
Right.
No, but there's, I mean, it's been part of the discussion, you should highlight that they've been part of the discussion as this whole, whole piece.
Well, and actually, who are you going, who are you gonna negotiate the MOU with, the selectmen, right?
It would be, it's not gonna be, it's, it's gonna be an agreement with that group. The letter's gonna be delivered to town meeting, whatever that group is, the.
The committee that we establish.
No, it'd be similar to the.
And who determines on that group?
That's the town chair.
The town determines who's on the committee, and then the committee.
You say the town determines.
Who is the town?
It's probably gonna be a cooperative effort between the board of selectmen, this board, and the town moderator, I would assume.
Is it gonna determine who's on the committee?
Together.
Isn't legally, town meeting, the town, in other words, if you say the town of Burlington, 'cause I thought it was maybe selectmen or somebody else, and one lawyer or somebody said, no, the town is town meeting, when you say the town.
Well, there's a recommendation.
It all depends on the, on the matter. Yeah, town meeting.
There is a recommendation before us that we can all read, and that can be presented at town meeting.
And, and I just wanted to be clear, the 30 days was, because if you go to the state, it's a whole different process, and it's, it's a whole different set of documents and approvals.
Can you explain to the board what it is we would be voting on?
I'm just saying.
To vote, because I don't think that people are comfortable, but let's narrow it to what we would be voting on tonight.
I just passed Ernie the note of all of the items on the 19th, so.
All of the items on the.
We just have a long agenda on the 19th.
I know.
So when we get, when we get later, after this, we may wanna discuss starting the 19th meeting earlier, rather than finishing after midnight?
Yeah, let's, we don't need to do that right in the second, we can do that after.
Are we going towards making a recommendation tonight?
I've asked Kristin to, to summarize something for the board.
So what you are recommending on tonight, you're recommending on the warrant article, which adds asks for 300 additional units. The, sorry, I'm just, so the question in front of you is also, they have 13 percent, 39 units, the question, 13, 14 percent. As mentioned, that they're targeted to senior residents, or to the towns, if the town decides not to, for, just have them be regular affordable housing units. As mentioned in the bullet point earlier, the rent will be that set by the DHCD, DHCD 80 percent median income. Each building itself cannot be more than 170 units. What else is, and that, so those pieces are the pieces in the bylaw itself. As I mentioned, in the staff report, the second pieces of this were out in the MOU, which is not necessarily what you're recommending on, but what you want that town meeting to know in your recommendation were important piece aspects that need to be included in a future memorandum of understanding, is the offer to fund for the consultant to help the town create, because the town does need to take part in this local option and create the criteria for its residents, as to what exactly that criteria will be, what the asset limits will be. Also, per year, either per, also per year, that they fund and or just we have a contract to both educate and monitor the existing units in place. And the other thing that was added was a recommendation that the unit should be placed in the walkable area proximity to amenities. Those are part of your recommendation. The pieces in the beginning are the pieces that are within the bylaw itself, in the language itself, which is the 13 or 14 percent, the 80 percent median income for the, for that amount of units, our preference, senior, regular, affordable, we choose, in the bylaw. And obviously, the additional 300 units themselves. Any other questions?
I'm still confused, 'cause we, the 13, 14, you've got me confused on, because that's not the language in, in the.
Well, but this is 13, I'm just saying, if you wanna change the bylaw, you need to decide, is your recommendation gonna be 13 percent or 14 percent? So you'd say.
So we would be recommending to town meeting, that we would recommend approval of this So, we would be recommending to town meeting that we would recommend approval of this at fourteen percent.
With the following criteria.
Right.
Understood following criteria, that is your recommendation to town meeting.
Some of the town meeting will have to make that amendment.
Some of them.
Yeah, but you make a recommendation, you have a narrative as to the reasons why you're making it and the criteria that you say, I recommend because these things. And as I, and these first, a couple of these things have to do with the bylaw. So, if you did go to thirteen to fourteen, you, someone on, would have to make the amendment thirteen to fourteen. The planning board recommend thirteen, we understand it's thirteen, but recommend fourteen. And, and then further, there was discussion of certain items to be crafted within a memorandum of understanding offered by the applicant, and it needs to be put in a understanding with, a memorandum of understanding with the town. So, that's, that's how your recommendation would roll out.
Right. I'm, I'm not sure how the board feels about voting on this tonight. That's what I am, I would want to ask.
I'm not ready to vote on it tonight.
That's my concern, I don't think the board is ready to vote on it tonight. I understand that the nineteenth is a very long and difficult meeting, and separately, we may decide to start early. But I think, I'm looking, I'm judging the room, and I'm thinking that we have people that aren't ready to vote tonight. Who is ready to vote tonight?
Okay.
Who is not ready to vote tonight? One, two, three, four, five, okay, I don't think we can vote tonight. So.
So, is there any additional information that.
We want from them.
We want from them or for us to provide before the night?
Madam Chair, yeah. Something I'd like to add in our recommendation, if we do recommend it, is that there is a detailed comprehensive plan for education for these units. Because that's where my sticking point is. I mean, I'm in favor of the project overall, and again, I'm a big fan of Nor Blum and what you've done on third app. I just, I just want to make sure we're targeting the right people, the people understand what they're getting into when they do this, and that we don't build them and we don't, we build them and we don't end up, we end up not filling them.
Right, we don't want that either.
So, I think what you're hearing from us is that, in theory, we are all in agreement, but we need to hammer out some of these details, and we understand better what exactly it is that we're voting on, and we need to go through the language of the bylaw very carefully.
We'll do that next week with staff and.
Yes, and then.
And keep it a very short meeting next time.
That would be the hope, yes.
Mike, and that's where the consultant comes in, that's what should come out of that agreement.
So, does anyone else have any questions or anything else that we want to consider before we continue?
So, I do have a question. I know we've discussed education process and money towards, to be used for whatever, but doesn't, the bottom line is, if they're not filled, you're not getting fifteen hundred dollars a month, right? I mean, or, correct?
We're incented to.
So, you got the incentive to fill these units. If we put the criteria that it's gonna be affordable for Burlington seniors, and you can't find them, you're gonna go out and, you know, you have, they haven't walked in your door, you're gonna go out and find them, right? I mean, that's the reality of it. It's, you know, it doesn't hurt us to, for those to remain vacant, other than unfortunately Burlington residents aren't taking advantage of it.
Right, now, we did in the meeting talk about the possibility of opening it up to people. If, if in the rare circumstance we didn't get enough seniors, I personally don't think that's gonna happen. But if it did happen, we could open it up to other special classes of people. We could decide, that the committee would decide, would that be veterans, would that be?
Disabled people?
Disabled people, would that be people who used to live in Burlington and moved away, but they grew, you know, they lived here for fifty years, or, yes.
You don't want to be discussing that.
No, no, none of that to be decided tonight. The committee can, can draw things up so that there isn't, there is a chance that if they didn't get enough seniors from Burlington applying, that we could offer them to other people.
You have a tiered system.
Yes, so, with this in mind, I, yes.
Could I ask that staff or somebody send us out the, because what Betsy was quoting from, I didn't see in the.
We don't, yeah, the backup, we don't have that.
Is that what she was quoting from, the backup?
I think so.
Yeah, the special conditions in the warrant article, yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Okay, can we see those?
Sure.
I would think we should.
Yep.
Okay.
We'll send staff exactly what was sent out to town meeting members.
Okay.
Final version.
And I also, in the interest of trying to figure out other committees, I think, when, when was, when's, when does zoning bylaw review meet?
Eleven.
Next one.
The eleventh day.
The eleventh?
Yep.
Okay. It might be helpful to understand some of, just the language itself at that point.
Right.
We'll send that out, and I, I did, I just wanted to preference. I didn't, I don't mean to push, I just want to make sure, based on what our agenda is coming up in front of us, that we just address what we're looking for, so we're not in an hour and a half or so at the next meeting, that's all.
Okay.
Oh, it's out of four thirty.
All right, let's continue, and we're gonna try and make this real quick on the nineteenth. We can meet in the meantime to hammer all of this out. Sound good?
Motion made to the planning board meeting, continue planning board meeting of September nineteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, seven, zero, thank you. We will work this out, but I think you're getting the message that we are generally positive about this. We just need to work out some of the details. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
So, we're quickly moving on, we have minutes from February twenty-first and April eighteenth that was sent around earlier this week. I'm hoping that everyone hasn't had a chance to review them.
Yes.
Okay, does anybody have any changes that they want to make at this time?
I had some for the twenty-first.
And did you already submit them, or do you want to go over them now?
I submitted them.
Okay, you have them, great, all right.
Madam Chair, may I make a request that we approve them separately, because I cannot vote on the.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, I am ready to take a motion.
All right, motion made, a motion made to accept the meeting minutes of February twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so we're five, zero, two. And then.
Okay, motion to accept the minutes of April eighteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, so we're now six, zero, one for those, okay? All right, we have discussion items. Before we go to the discussions items that are on there, I'd like to find out if board members are open to the idea of beginning our September nineteenth meeting a little bit early. I know that's difficult for some people. I don't even know if it's possible for us to start at, say, six thirty. Is there anyone that cannot make it if we start at six thirty?
Five to six?
Six, fine.
Six, can anyone make it, can everyone make it at six?
I'd rather not.
Okay.
Okay, let's say six thirty, okay? And we will strive to be very efficient all night long. Okay, next item up for discussion, we have been asked to weigh in on an item that's before the board of selectmen, that the Shell on Middlesex Turnpike has applied for a liquor license. As you all know, we have no jurisdiction over liquor licenses, but for some reason, the board of selectmen has asked us if we want to weigh in on this matter. Personally, I think that we should not, because it's outside of our jurisdiction, but I am willing to entertain any comments from the board.
Why do they want us to comment?
I'm not really sure.
Just preference.
Yes, to give it some context.
Yes, sorry. Normally, when the board of selectmen get earthmoving permits or liquor licenses for things like restaurants, they wanna, they reach out to us as the planning department to make sure if it's a restaurant that's under permitting, that we've permitted it already, that it's an approved restaurant. So, that's typically why we get these requests. For this instance, it was a little confusing in their application, because they have potential plans for, which have not been submitted to us yet, for a different renovate, different layout. However, they haven't been submitted to us. I commented back saying, you know, that we don't, we, nothing's been, nothing's been submitted, nor, of course, not approved. And then they asked again, saying that they were looking for it in the existing Shell convenience building.
Right.
So, that's why the, and I said, well, there's not, there's no planning board action needed, because they're not doing anything at this time. But if you, and they, Betty McDonough asked, can you still bring it in front of your board to see if they have a comment? Since you did have a comment back at one seventy-three Bedford Street in two thousand sixteen, where we commented back and said, we don't have any jurisdiction, we don't, there's nothing in, under construction, but we're, you know, generally philosophically opposed to alcohol sales in convenience stores. But again, we don't have, it's not our role.
That would all be personal preference.
Yes.
It would all be our personal preference.
Exactly, so.
So, I mean, if you want to comment back like that, or just comment without a, I mean, you don't have to comment, yeah.
It is a personal preference, and I mean, I don't know if we really want to put every board member on the spot to ask them what this, because it really doesn't matter what we think. It's not up to us. Does anyone feel strongly that we should comment?
We can offer them any traffic studies we have for that area that they may want to consult. If traffic and safety is an issue, they can get a consultant to see if by adding that, it increases traffic and at peak times, but it's their decision. We'll give them whatever information we can, but I don't think it's our call.
Well, we would always share information that we have if they need it, but I think I'm hearing from the board that we kind of recognize it's not our jurisdiction.
Madam Chair, I'd like to say, I like what we said in two thousand sixteen, and I, if we're giving our opinions, I'm strongly opposed to any liquor store in a gas station, because that just opens a Pandora's box of everyone else is gonna want to do it, so, I don't know.
I am as well, and that's why we submitted that letter in two thousand sixteen.
When we were kids, we used to buy a liquor at the, at the gas station.
That before prohibition or?
Okay, so, let me just quickly poll the board, and the question is, do we want to just say nothing, or do we want to repeat what we said in two thousand sixteen? Ernie?
I want to repeat the philosophical.
Okay.
I'm good for repeat.
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 I say, I say repeat, but I, you know, I think this, you know.
Paul?
I don't know what I'm repeating.
We, what we said in two thousand sixteen is, we have no jurisdiction over this, but we are generally philosophically opposed to selling liquor from gas stations. Okay, you've got an answer, I agree.
Sure.
There we go, we just repeat what we said in two thousand sixteen. All right, moving on. We would love to hear an update from the Airbnb subcommittee. I know you've been meeting and working hard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, we want to thank Liz for all the hard work and the detailed information that she gave us. It was a lot, and so much so that we had to post, push back to kind of dissect all of it. And basically, what we want to do tonight is just give the board an update on what we've found and discussed in our quick meeting, and hopefully get some direction from you guys on, and Madam Chair, on where you'd like us to proceed. We found, I mean, just a quick search on Airbnb, I found six different Airbnbs being openly advertised in Burlington, and these have pictures, descriptions of the rooms, and they range from all different types, from a whole apartment on Kimball Court, that, I don't know if he's a businessman that travels a lot, to multiple rooms being rented out in a, in a home for Airbnbs. And also, we saw another one where it was a big suite, a private suite in a large home that's being rented out as an Airbnb. And through some of the excellent literature Liz gave us, one of the items on there said that regulating it is really not worth the town's trouble, whether that means the, the fees that you get back, the amount of administration it would take to, to do it. But I think it's important to, to at least have some type of, some type of record or, you know, a list of these. So, what we wanted to first come to you guys to ask is, what we exactly want to achieve with this Airbnb, look into this Airbnbs, do we want to go into regulation? Do we want to outlaw them? Do we want to make them, you need to get a permit, register? What's our, what's our end game here in looking into this issue?
Okay, I can answer from my point of view, and I'd love to hear what everyone else thinks. The first thing, I think, that we need to do is ensure that these places are safe. So, the idea of renting out individual rooms may not be safe, because we don't know where those rooms are located, we don't know if there's access in and out that is safe. We don't know what would happen if there was a fire. So, we do need to come up with some way of ensuring that if these are being offered in town, that they are safe and that people would be able to get out if there's a fire and et cetera. I like the idea also of registering, because I, I think that Airbnbs that are not owner occupied make neighbors uncomfortable, and they, I know the people that I've spoken to would prefer to know what's, who's running this establishment, and who's in charge, and who can they call if there's a problem, and things like that. So, that's what I would be looking for. Anyone else?
Uh, what from?
Let me comment just a little bit more on that. Yeah, to second Mike thanking Liz for all that information is great stuff. The same thing that Mike was talking about, from the Economic Policy Institute, that the costs outweigh the benefits of kind of tracking it, because.
Where did that come from?
It was the Economic Policy Institute, we can give you a copy of that. And the idea is that from the taxes which we're allowed to do, to put up the infrastructure to track it, it doesn't weigh out. But absolutely, to your point, Madam Chair, that the notes that we took during the meeting was about the safety of that. The safety, you'd license it because of, you know, CO2, fire, gas shut offs, you know, liability insurance, all the things you're talking about, we did, we did talk about as well. So, there's things that you want to do to that, so then we, we're saying, so, do we want to get into that business? Or, like, like Mike said, do we just, let's get out of the business because it's too much trouble? So, then there's a couple of things that we thought about when the housing forum we had. Well, does the Airbnb help the senior stay in their house? If they're gonna, you know, lease a bedroom, you know, to help out staying in their house? So, we've talked about that, the housing forum, and this kind of plays into that versus this conflicting. I know that Mike brought one up down in his neighborhood, where I know that two kids are in college, so it looks like they're renting out the college kid's bedroom from an Airbnb standpoint. Certainly helps with the college costs, so, that's great, but, you know, kind of the registering. And then looking into our own bylaw, we've actually already got something in there, right? For short-term stays. Now, it's limited.
Do we?
We do, right? Remember the person from Thistle that came in?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
She came in for a special permit, but it's limited to the maximum of two people, kind of an accessory apartment. So, then you've got the hotels, which is greater than fifty, you've got the short-term stay, which is limited to two. You've kind of got something in between possibly that we don't cover. So, and maybe the registration is actually a special permit, but then you wouldn't want to do it on a one-term basis. You'd want to do it continually to monitor, to make sure that the fire, the fire alarms haven't been tampered with, that the gas shut offs are still in place and not broken. So, that's kind of things that the building inspector may have to do. Now, you have to kind of hire building inspectors to do all that. So, it's all, I think that plays into that whole Economic Policy Institute of the costs outweigh the benefits of this whole thing. Now, the one thing I asked Mike was, I said, does Burlington really need it? If we're kind of getting into that, do we prohibit it or do we allow it type of stage? So, what's, what's the intent of it? If you kind of say, why do people do it? Well, they're looking for short-term stays in and around the town. And so, well, we get a lot of places in town for short-term stay, they're called hotels. A lot of people stay in long-term stays, and I mean, they're becoming drug, you know, drug labs, but it may be something that Burlington doesn't need, because we've already got that short-term stay stock, so to speak. So, that's kind of what the things that Mike was saying, says, so what are we, what are we gonna try to, what do you want to do with it? You want to go in, we spent a lot of time trying to put our arms around it, and then maybe, you know, stay with the special permit, and then find out what they're up to, and then have them register and keep track of it, or we just say, you know what, we're okay, and what we do is.
Didn't we at one point in the past discuss perhaps limiting it to the entire structure, whether that's an apartment or a home, so that you can't rent out individual rooms, but you can rent out the entire thing? Another way to go, and I've seen in some of the other literature is that, and this is the opposite actually, is that if you're renting on Airbnb, it has to be owner occupied, so that way there's someone.
What does that mean, though? Does it mean that they have to be there?
Yes.
Percent of the time do they have to be there?
Exactly, so, I see what you're saying, it's very, very complicated. But I, personally, I think it's worth it to set forth some regulations, even if we aren't policing them all. But if we have some regulations in place, if there's a problem, we have a mechanism to help neighbors who are concerned about what's going on. It doesn't mean that we're necessarily going to be out there checking up on everybody all the time. We probably don't have the manpower to do that. But if there are abuses and problems in the neighborhood caused by these, at least we would have some mechanism to help.
Well, maybe what you do is you turn it around, now that you're talking about that. Maybe instead of us policing, that the requirement is they have to come in and submit.
Yeah, but they won't.
Well, so if they don't, then they're off the, then they're off the, then they're off the polls, like boss said.
Then you can go in the other direction, you can just say, let's prohibit them, and then we don't actually have to bother doing anything unless it becomes a problem. And then if the neighbors come to us and say, this is a problem, then we can say, well, you're not allowed to do that.
We brought up the instance, yeah.
But they're not allowed to do it without a special permit, now and there.
That's what we have now.
But, and I don't think we would bother enforcing that unless there was a problem.
Another component of that cost benefit analysis, a huge benefit, is awareness to people in the neighborhoods that something's in their town, which they probably already know anyway when they see, nobody living there, you know, the only time they see the owner is when they take the trash barrels out. I mean, but that's a huge benefit component, of the component is, you know, you know, awareness, that people know, okay, that's an Airbnb, let's keep the kids away from that side of the neighborhood. So, even though the monetary costs aren't great, the information's good, good info.
Do we have a definition, do we have a definition of short-term stay?
Do we have a definition, do we have a definition of short-term stay? Can I lease my house for four weeks?
You can lease your house. I don't think there's any regulation of leasing your whole house.
Yeah, your whole house, I think you can rent. On Airbnb, you can do one night up to.
But again, to Bill's point.
Some places, you know, don't allow the short term, so you have to rent that out for more than 30 days or something. And so, you adjust the price. Somebody's only going away there two weeks, but you enter into a four-week lease and you've, you've beaten the game.
Bill was talking about the need for it from the person who is renting it. In other words, from the person who's looking to rent their Airbnb. I turn it around a little bit based on what I heard at the master plan meetings, where, you know, an elderly woman who has two college girls come in and, and she rents a room out, and not only do they supply with money, they also supply with a little bit of companionship. And, you know, if she's on the floor, when they come home, they call the, the ambulance.
But is that an Airbnb, or is that just?
Well, it's the same idea. Isn't that the same idea?
Yeah, so I take the term Airbnb, it would just be, maybe short-term.
Okay, so you're talking like two nights, three nights, rather than a college semester.
That sounds more like a long-term arrangement.
Is that even allowed, though?
You know, there's, there's another, we're dealing with issues right now up in state New York with, and in the city, they, they have rental units where, you know, if it's a three-family versus a, you know, if it's three units or three-family versus a two-family or one-family, they have what they, you know, you obviously have your initial certi- certificate of occupancy, and then what they have is certificates of compliance. So, if it's a three-family, it needs to be inspected every three years. And that needs to get a new certificate of compliance issued on it. So, that would, it would have to be inspected by the fire department. So, if you're going to be leasing out places, how do you know if the smoke detector's even working in the building? How do you know that the, you know, the carbon monoxide is working in that building? So, there's, there's requirements in these places that if you're going to be leasing out to the public, and you're going to be allowing people to live in your property, then all of these categories need to be inspected every three years or whatever, you know, maybe the fire and the fire alarm systems have maybe once every, every one year. You know, the building itself has to be looked at every three years, and you have to issue a re, reissue the certificate of compliance to make sure that it's in compliance, so the people that are living there are living in a safe conditions. You know, so that's one of the issues that I think, you know, if they're going to be renting these places out, you know, they should be regulated for that reason, to know that.
And then to, to make up the cost of the extra resources, you need to do that. That's why you have to collect the tax.
The other issue is, you know, you've got places, I know, I've driven by places, unfortunately Burlington, I, I see, you know, 10, 12 cars in the parking lot of what is supposed to be a house. It's a parking lot. I mean, can't tell me they're not renting out probably 15 different rooms in there. I mean, it becomes an issue. And you, you know, if you have that in a neighborhood, what happens? All of a sudden, it's not a neighborhood anymore. You know, for the same reason we've turned down people having, you know, massage beds in their homes, or there was someone came before us for yoga classes or exercise classes in their home, it becomes a business. You know, that when you have traffic going in and out of the neighborhood, it's no longer a neighborhood anymore. So, you know, it, maybe it comes a point where, you know, how many units are you renting out? And I think we need to, those should be regulated for safety reasons anyways. I mean, if not just for fire, you know, for fire codes and fire alarms in place and things like that, that are staying, you know, that are staying in compliance. So, I don't, there's so many issues that come up with this. It's, I guess there's different reasons for having to regulate them, and I don't think it becomes a cost-efficient thing to do. That's not even the reason. It's almost like more of a safety reason and to, and to, you know, to keep, contain, you know, to maintain the integrity of our neighborhoods as neighborhoods.
Yeah.
You know, no longer, you know, someone bought a house in a single-family, you know, neighborhood, they, they didn't buy it in a, you know, in a, in a, in an apartment complex. So, it's, you know.
And Mike and I came to that pretty quickly, so it's kind of the, the, the financial piece of it's off the side.
Yeah, you can't.
You know what I mean? It's just now we're focusing a lot on that safety piece.
If we say they're not allowed, they're just going to happen illegally. I, I think that's a reality we have to recognize. The question is, what do we do about that? Do we have some type of an enforcement to shut them down? And what's the cost to the town to police that and do it? You go on the internet to find them, and in many of them, you don't know the address, you know. I know Andy said he could just look at the picture, and he knows where it is sometimes, but not always. So, they're, they're going to happen, and I think that we have to do something to prevent us, the town, from having a liability saying that we did not do something and somebody got injured, and they sued the town because the town didn't properly protect some unwitting person from, comes from the other side of the world and didn't realize that they're illegal.
The town doesn't allow them, then it's an illegal rental, and aren't liable for it.
It's true.
Doesn't mean we won't get sued.
Neighborhoods are fragile things.
Those regulations, and we don't inspect, then we're liable.
Well, it's not, I know in these particular cases, it's not up to the town or the city to be setting these inspections up. They put the, they put the liability on to the onus on the owner to set it up.
And then send out a certificate.
And then, then the certificate gets issued, and it gets placed in a common area where it's visible, so the people that walk in understand, okay, the smoke detectors, everything has been certified, it's been recertified, it's been re, you know, certificate of compliance has been issued on this property, so I'm safe.
So, we're getting the feeling that everyone doesn't think outlawing them completely is the, the answer here.
Can we do that legally?
I, I think we should if we, I mean, neighborhoods are fragile things. And you get one house, you know, that somebody gets in, doesn't take care of it, the cars are on the lawn, and so forth. And I still think of Burlington primarily as a residential town.
Right. I wouldn't be happy.
And so, I think that we should do whatever we can to protect the integrity of neighborhoods. And if people want to do rental properties and so forth, move to Somerville or some, you know, some other place. But, but let me finish, Ernie. But I'm just saying, you know, if, I, I really don't think it should be allowed, to be honest with you. And you say, well, it's going to happen anyhow. Well, maybe, but there are a lot of things that, you know, we don't allow it to happen.
And more will happen if you allow it.
And we should, you know, we should be, we should, we should be creating laws as if we were the person on the other end of it, and that's really the bottom line.
For the president.
Would you be concerned if your neighbor was running a house that was having different people in it every single night and coming in?
Absolutely. I wouldn't like that.
I just don't think it's fair to the neighbors in most of these cases.
Isn't, isn't the answer there, though, to, so the person that has this problem with his neighbor having 12 cars in his yard, and he knows, knows he's renting out rooms, and he, if he sends a complaint to the building inspector, is not the building inspector required to act on that complaint within a certain number of days or something? I, I don't, I'm, I'm talking way over my head right now, but I would think so.
I think that's what happened with the Give and Drive example that we had.
I can't hear you, Jim.
I think that's what happened with the Give and Drive example that we had a couple of years ago, was that was a situation that he was informed that that was what was happening. You know, the, the more than two, more than two rooms being.
Thistle Road.
Yeah, it was right down on the Woben Line.
Yeah, I know.
The application said, but whatever.
All right, so that was, so he, then he went and forced it, right?
So, then he said, in order for you to, in order for you to have two people unrelated in the, in the home, you have to apply for a special permit with the planning board.
In order to have.
The two, you know, the, you could only allow, you could only allow two with a special permit.
That's, that's only if they're paying you rent, though.
And I'm inclined to say only to, and I wouldn't want short-term rentals. I would, long-term rentals for the, somebody who needs help making ends meet, and if that person wants to rent out a room in their house on a long-term basis, I don't really have a problem with that. It's the, it's the constant turnover that I think makes neighbors very uncomfortable, and that they would, it would make me uncomfortable. I don't, I don't think that's what people move to Burlington for.
That's almost going to be a problem, because that little old lady who rents out her room to the two college students.
Those are her nieces.
Is probably not going to show up in front of us looking for a special permit to do so.
No, but if we allow that.
By rights?
For long-term rentals.
Why, we're getting us, we're getting her some housing down at Third Avenue.
But short-term rentals are problematic.
Longer than six months at a time?
We'd have to figure that out, yeah. I don't think we're going to have all the answers tonight.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can't, I mean, it's, yeah, there's, there's the age-old dilemma about people not being able to stay in the houses, and you've got to be sensitive to that. But at the same time, you know, those people lived in those houses during their years where they were bringing their children up, and they didn't have people next to them renting out to strangers coming in either, you know what I mean? So, it's.
Well, we had some good benchmarking. We had benchmarking from, I think, from the, from a city standpoint, which Mike and I talked about. Well, that's different, like the Somervilles and the Cambridges, although a lot of our applicants do reference those when they're saying, hey, wouldn't you like to be like that and go to a French city? But, and then I think there's one that I liked, it was Westfield, which if you've gone to Westfield, they do have Westfield State, but it's more of a suburban area, a little small town, and that one more fit into it.
How did they handle?
It was short-term, it was short-term, it was owner occupied.
It's being residents, that kind of thing.
Owner occupied, short-term residential, yeah. And again, we've gone into licensing of all the safety. So, it was again, everything that we're talking about. But it was more residential suburban-type activity versus the Somervilles and the Cambridges, and they had, they had something different.
It's a very different feel. Our neighborhoods are very, very different from those in Somerville and Cambridge.
I think, Paul said, they're fragile.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You, you put something in there and then, you know, changes the whole.
It sounds like you should include the building inspector in your discussions, too.
Well, it's funny you say that, because separately, I've had two people talk to me, and they say, you know, we're concerned about people renting out because people are adding onto the houses and, and using for Airbnb type of thing.
The express purpose of using them for.
That's what I've, I've heard, and I think you mentioned a separate one, so at least three that, that people come up to you, and so.
At the last Stoning Biola Review Committee, one of the topics they discovered, planned to discuss or look at is Airbnb. I don't think it was on the immediate list of things to do, but it's, it's on their long list, so you might want to coordinate with them and see what they're planning to do.
Who's on that? Who's the chairman of that?
Sherri Ellis.
Sherri Ellis, the, the two, Sherri Ellis, and that's a huge, the chair and vice chair.
And it was interesting, because at that same meeting that Jack and I were at, Andy, the building, Andy.
Undersen.
Undersen. The building inspector was there, and he was, you know, he.
He had some.
From his side, you know, he, he can't just go walk in the house and say, hey, let me, you know, so. He has some, even if.
There's limitations as to how he can enforce it.
Right.
One of the, sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I said, just one of the things that I know in the building department has been difficult is when an in-law apartment is permitted, which is totally fine.
Yep.
And, you know, you have in-laws where you have your elder, elder in-law, whatever, in-laws, and, you know, they, something happens to them or they move on from your house. And then maybe your kids come home from college and they live in it, and that, that's all well and good. But there's also situations where in-laws become kind of not really allowed to family houses, or they become areas for this Airbnb. So, just the, the kind of question mark of, how should we be thinking about in-laws and formalizing them to be something, or not?
Right.
But just really understanding that they are, things are happening. They're not happening above the radar, or on the radar, whatever. They're all under the radar. So, we just, it's just a question mark, because it's really difficult to enforce. We know it's happening. In-laws, people are putting up walls and then saying it's a, you know, they're renting it out as a second unit.
But they're selling the house as a two-family house, and the poor people will buy it, realize that they don't have it.
And then the building department comes in, and they say, oh, I want to knock this two-family and build another one. Well, this isn't really a two-family house.
Yeah.
So, just that kind of question mark of this gray area around what happens for an in-law 10 years after, and those kind of questions, I know. And then some of them, a lot of the in-laws, they're very, they're ripe for Airbnb because it's all right there.
I personally am much more comfortable with long-term rentals. I don't like the short-term rentals.
Well, Airbnb is even more dangerous, because they don't even have to set up the in-law setup. They're renting, you know.
Rooms.
A bedroom, an empty bedroom, and they're sharing common areas, and.
Right.
So, one even advertises itself as a bed and breakfast, and they provide breakfast there. So, I think from what we're hearing from the, the, yeah, from the, the board is that we want to delve further into working on some type of regulation, developing some, maybe some guidelines, some bullet points on which way we want to go, as far as like longer than six, shorter than six months. Maybe we, we just look more into.
The number of, of people or rooms that are being rented as well.
We might inquire of Town Council if any of their other towns.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's great. We should do that.
There's a lot. I mean, this is like, this isn't a, you know, it's a metro, I mean, it's a metro Boston, or, you know, national issue, obviously. Every community in the country is facing.
We can also reach out to Sherri and see what, what their plan is on, how they were thinking of attacking it.
It is a very, very big issue, and I'm really grateful that the two of you are willing to take it on. It's going to be a lot of work. Thank you.
Josh, what do you guys do up there in Danvers?
I don't know, but what was it? There was a couple, there was a couple towns that Liz found. There, the information she sent, she said there are a couple model towns that she could provide more info.
Well, it was only January, or January, July 1, 2019, that it was eligible for hotel tax. So, I think you're going to see a lot of regulation now, especially in communities and coastal communities and resort communities that are like.
Are true.
Oh, and just to make sure they're getting their local access for it.
But I think incentives are different, though. Coastal communities, those people move there knowing that there's going to be people renting and coming in and out of short-term rentals. I mean, people move to Burlington and buy a house in a residential neighborhood and expect.
Precisely, but I think what we're going to see is a rollout of a lot of model regulations that we get to be taking a look at. I, one more thing that I forgot to put on the discussion items. The Southern New England American Planning Association Conference is October 17th and 18th. It runs, and it's in Springfield this year. Usually, it's closer, or it's in Worcester. And Worcester's manageable to come back, but Springfield is difficult.
Didn't they just have one in Hartford?
They did. And we moved our meeting from Thursday to Wednesday last year, so we could attend without having to come back between Thursday and Friday. And I guess, and what I wanted to ask the board is if it would be available to move the, our October meeting from the 17th, Thursday the 17th, to Wednesday the 16th.
Can we get this room? Again?
Yeah, it's a Wednesday, unless Ways and Means is meeting, which I don't think they are at this point, but.
Does anyone object to that?
No objections.
No objections when we find out.
Wait, is this a, is that what you said?
I'll confirm that we, we can be here, but.
No objections?
If that's okay, that would be great for us. October 16th instead of 17th.
Do we need a motion, or can we just say yes?
For our travel.
So, we don't need to vote?
No, it's fine.
No, well, you know, we'll vote on it.
So, Paul, just that, just moving that, that October 17th meeting to October 16th, just that one day over.
I almost said that.
No, that's next year's.
Yeah, that's not this October.
No, no, that's 2020. There's also, Jen put 2020. Take a look in your books. We need to.
We can vote on that.
Look at the next, we can, the next meeting. Okay, we, yeah. I'm not going to scare you, but it's a long list next week.
We know that.
One more item, Madam Chair, if I may. So, separately, even to the people that are talking, the, the additions for Airbnb, I got a question on sober houses. Anybody heard about that construction? So, they're having sober, people are threatening sober housing coming in. Have you heard any sober houses?
Yeah, a little bit.
Sober housing. You have, I had, never heard of it.
They call it, they call them different things. Group homes, there's, there's one right down off Cambridge Street in Woben, is that little side cut through. Melanson's headed there for 30 years. I don't know.
There was a, there's some sort of discussion with one person that emailed me, said, you ever heard of it? My neighbor's building, some addition says it's going to be a sober home. I don't know if, yeah, I don't know if it's going to be in addition with, you know, living near in a sober home attached to it.
Yes, they live there.
They live there.
It's like a group home.
And so, they're getting income from the state on it?
They're getting income from the individuals, or the individual gets money from the state. I don't know.
There, I, I have no knowledge of anything going on in Burlington, but.
Our office has not been contacted.
There's other, there's been other communities that have kind of floated a couple warnings about places, they, there are some places that are a little bit hazy as to if they're associated with state agencies or not, but they're offering themselves up as places but they're offering themselves up as places that.
Recovery centers.
Recovery centers and you can come here and you can pay me this amount of money and you will have all this recovery. And just to watch out for these, because people, someone, oh, I'm this, I'm this, so you have to allow me. But just to make sure that everybody has all their ducks in a row with their affiliations that put them in a protected group home or something else. Is, we know that just in the news and radar, people have said, just make sure if someone comes in and asks you these things, just check to.
Do you know if these, touch, somebody said, Bill was referring to would be protected.
Please ask it.
Some are, some are, but it was just, all I'm saying is, in other communities, there've been some that have come in that aren't run in, or affiliated in a protected, that would be protected, but come in and say they're protected.
Okay.
So just, that's all.
And the ones I know of would probably fall under our rooming house restriction.
Well, let, let me do this. Let me send you the, send you the addresses of the people that were concerned about that. You can see if the building inspector, I think they're already building now if there are permits for straight residential so they wouldn't be under that guise.
Or there's people who think this is already happening.
Yeah.
Oh.
And, and as I mentioned, I mean, there are affiliated group homes that are associated with and permitted under state agencies that, that are protected and that we, we don't have any purview over. But what my, my point is, is you just, there is an uptick with, you know, these epidemics of things, of people kind of saying, oh, I'm going to help treat you and.
If they're not under state regulation, they are not protected. Is that correct?
Correct. That's, you just need to check.
Yeah, they could be under the Department of Developmental or whatever they call themselves now.
There's one on Lexington Street. I don't know.
Yeah, there's.
But my, my question's this. Terry Avenue, was there supposed to be a sideways on Long Street, Bill?
Sidewalk on Long Street.
So we said nothing, no sidewalk, because I remember there were very contentious.
There's a little, there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a short sidewalk, yes.
Right, right to where that brook is.
We have.
There's no sidewalk.
No, there isn't.
There's grass.
It's not long.
Not now. There's, they haven't started. They haven't started.
But there should be.
There are.
They've been, they've been there a while and I know it was, it sounded very contentious, you know. That woman almost lost it because she insisted they were not going to build any sidewalk.
It's part of the deal, but they just haven't started construction.
That's right.
A sidewalk to the edge of.
How long is it going to take? Is everything's done down there? They're operating? There is an increase in big trucks down there.